Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, so we might establish a quorum?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Oh, is that better?
No. That's not better.
Efren can turn him down from the back.
Okay. I can speak very softly.
That's better.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
Here. I would ask Councilmember Rick Jennings to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All who can, please rise.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Good evening, everyone. To the members of the public, to the city staff, to my colleagues. We have a very busy agenda tonight, and let's get right to it. We begin with the consent. Well, Madam Clerk, before we get to the consent calendar, there are a number of items that have moved. And then maybe I can speak about the order at which we are going to take various items without objection. So why don't we go through what is going to be moved here?
Of course. Councilmember Laloe has asked that Item 4 be removed from the consent agenda completely. Item 13 on the consent agenda, Section 8 of the resolution, is incorrect. The hearing date is set for June 29th, not June 15th. And then Councilmember Harris has comments on Item 24 on the consent calendar. And I believe Councilmember Laloe would like to continue Item 28.
28. And then Councilmember Geta, on Item 30?
Correct. If we can move that one to the next council meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. We talked about that, and I think that's an appropriate motion to continue that one for a week as well. So, Madam Clerk, why don't we then take a motion to continue Items 28 and 30? 28 continued indefinitely, correct? And 30 continued until next week. Is there a motion?
Item number 28 is moved to May 25th.
May 25th. I stand corrected. May 25th, and then May the 11th for Item 30. There's a motion by Councilmember Geta, seconded by Councilmember Laloe, on those two items being continued to the date specified. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Are we taking them both?
Yes, both.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, both.
Yes, so the motion is to move to continue Item 28 to May 25th, continue Item 30 to May 11th.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Yes.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Okay, let us go back then to the remainder of the consent calendar. And again, Item 4, Councilmember Laloe, you want to be heard separately tonight?
No, it's actually getting removed completely, Ms. Mayor.
Oh, being removed without objection. Very good. That's being removed. So then on the consent calendar, we have Items 1 through 3, 5 through 14, 13 as amended by the city clerk, suggested by the city clerk a moment ago. I'm going to get Councilman Harris in a minute. Items 15 through 26. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
And, Mr. Mayor, I do have four calls.
That's fine. I want a motion first, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I want to hear from Councilmember- Well, let's take the public testimony, then we'll hear from Councilmember Harris on Item 24.
May I have my first caller, please? May we have the first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. This is Raquel Brown. I'm the CEO of High Empress. I'm a social equity core graduate here in the Sacramento area, and I'm calling to oppose the cap on delivery in District 6. The city's core program guidelines call for the goal of 50% of the cannabis businesses in Sacramento to be owned by core participants. 12 of the 24 pending DOP applications were submitted by participants of the core program. With the limit of the 50 delivery businesses in the district, it will- we will be denied the access to the area if these 15 permits will not be accepted. If this cap is placed on District 6, we will be displaced. We would completely like for exemption for all core certified applicants in District 6, and we're asking for the city council and our mayor to be in agreement with us to exempt all core certified applicants from this cap in District 6. Currently, they are only- there's only two operators who are core certified that are in the district that are actually operating. If you look at this, there is no equity in that. So my request is for exemption for all certified core applicants, and I'm asking for the city's support. We have reached out to Councilmember Guerrero a few times to set up a meeting. Unfortunately, we have not been able to get that meeting prior to this meeting today, and we have started a petition, and we're just asking for the support of our city council and our city mayor to work with us collectively, in agreement with us, to exempt core. We've also reached out to Power and Alliance to see if there's any way we can set up a meeting to start that conversation around some of the issues that they-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. As far as displacement goes, and I just kind of wanted the city to know and our council members to know, if this cap is placed and stayed in place-
Thank you for your comments.
-we will have an opportunity, and we will be displaced.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is Malachi Amen of the Institute for More, and just calling to echo the previous caller on Item Number 26. The city has a policy of 50% in terms of a goal for all core participants to have 50% of all licenses for cannabis in the city. And we're nowhere near that amount, even if we look at the 40 or so applications currently in the pipeline across the board, not necessarily including the District 6 cap. Even if those were all approved, we would be nowhere near the 50% that the drug war survivors are entitled to have. And so there is no reason at this point- Earlier in the year, or actually last year, all of the fears that we had in 2017 were unfounded about there being not enough core participants. And now is the time to exclusively license core participants right now, not wait for a study, but exclusively license core participants right now for cannabis operations until the city has achieved its 50% goal. There's also no reason why we should not, as a city, and we're hoping that there will be some leadership from our city leaders, to hold a public hearing to look at all of the issues around equity in this industry, because we're having all of these agenda items and moving targets, and it's only further traumatizing people who are trying to navigate work and business and the trauma that they're already dealing with.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
And so we're asking that before any other cannabis items come before the council-
Thank you for your comments.
-we need to let core participants speak and have their voices be heard.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you very much. And I met with some of the core leaders today, and certainly a topic that we need to continue to dive into, and we will. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Harris. You want to talk on Item 24.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of brief comments. Fire Station 14, of course, is a very important project to the city, but it's been plagued by a few issues, one with liquefaction issues with the soil type that's there, and other things have come up, like a pandemic that has slowed down progress. If you've read the staff report, you know that they're looking for a little more money to get us across the finish line and a little more time. After extensive talks with staff, I feel confident that they will be able to bring us equality amenity in the timeframe that they've stated in their staff report, and that they will hold themselves responsible, as well as the consultants and contractors and designers, for each of their respective issues, and that they can bring it home with this infusion of money. So thanks to staff, and let's get this thing done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. It's great progress here. Okay, let's call the roll on the consent calendar as moved. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, the consent calendar passes. Let me just get rid of that objection. The city manager and I have been working to juggle a lot of important items here in terms of the order here. What I propose is that we take up Item 29 first. We then knock out Item 27. Then we do the two homeless workshops. Then we do the use of force policy. And I think that'll, if we're efficient, I think it'll get us through together. So let us begin with Item 29. Councilmember Vice Mayor Shenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we have a very long agenda tonight, and in light of that, I want to see if we could waive the presentation, and I'm going to move the item.
I'll second the item, Mayor.
Moved and seconded. We do have two members of the public who have called in. Let's hear from the public.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Nag. I'm the Vice President of Local 522. I proudly represent Sacramento's fight.
Can't hear.
I'm calling in support of the city manager's salary increase, as well as the recent raises for you, the mayor and council. As you are aware, Local 522 members have recently agreed to extend our labor agreement to January 1st, 2022. It should be noted that early in our contract discussions, the city made it very clear that due to the COVID pandemic, the city's financial future was bleak, and there was no interest in infusing any new money into labor contracts. Understanding the potential budgetary impacts of the COVID pandemic, Local 522 worked hard to reach this fair and equitable extension solution. Our extension agreement represents a good faith effort on behalf of Local 522 members and ultimately results in no further financial liability for the city. I want to thank each of you for supporting the extension through consent, as we feel that the agreement was made with the best interests of both the city and our members in mind. That said, raises for the mayor, the manager, and city council clearly represent a renewed confidence in the city's long-term financial outlook, which will undoubtedly trickle down through Sacramento's labor force. Local 522 members have proudly led the response to the COVID pandemic. We have proven ourselves through our professional service to the community, as well as our willingness to sacrifice during this last round of negotiations. We are very encouraged to see the city's renewed financial outlook and look forward to our next round of productive bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, I would ask that you not approve the increase in Howard's pay, given that he will be making more than the mayor of San Francisco, who also handles county issues there as well. I'll admit that there have been some positive developments in the city, however, many of the concerning ones have yet to be addressed by him. Those include the fact that he didn't take the necessary actions against the officers who murdered Stefan Clark, the fact that he made the decision to keep the warming centers closed in spite of the county saying that he didn't need to, and that it was his decision and not up to their temperature requirements. Either he didn't know that, and he was negligent, and that cost lives, or he knew that and was malevolent in his willingness to sacrifice lives. Either way, an increase says that you put a stamp of approval on everything that he has done as positive, with not enough negatives to result in the same pay or decrease in pay. You pin your future electoral hopes on him and your ability to determine whether or not all of his actions were worthy of continued employment and even a merit increase for good performance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There is a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any comments from members of the city council? If not, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Passes 9 to nothing. Thank you all very, very much. Now let's move back to Item 27, which is the statewide community infrastructure program. Who is presenting on this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sherri Smith with the Finance Department. The item before you tonight expands the city's participation in the statewide community infrastructure program to include a Melrose Community Facilities District option. Approval of the resolution increases flexibility for developers that utilize Skip. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor, got my hand up?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, the Skip program has proven to be largely successful, and in some instances extremely successful. I would like to open and close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Do we have public testimony on this item?
I have no public testimony on this item.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Yes, sorry.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We now move to the master siting plan, which we're all becoming very familiar with, as each of our colleagues present their vision and their plan for siting, for all it is going to take to make a tangible and visible difference on our homeless problem and help more people. And so, as we said earlier, and I won't give a long one tonight, just to repeat that what we're going to do is, what we intend to do, since this is a unique process, is to hear from all of the members, take that input, and then also hear from the community about sites that may have been missed or other ideas. And then we're going to seek collectively to put together a resolution that represents real progress, that represents Sacramento choosing to go big, to be able to provide safe places for people to be, so that we can also say that there are places where people should not be living. And this is a big piece of our effort to get there. We know that it's going to take a lot of funding, but let's remember that the Senate and the Assembly have each proposed $20 billion over five years for homelessness, unprecedented amount of money, in addition to all the federal resources that are coming down. This is a moment. This is the moment, and this is our opportunity to show that homelessness need not be hopelessness. So let us- let me turn it over. Who is going first between the two gentlemen who share district boundary? Councilmembers Geta and Shenier.
I believe I am, Mayor.
Okay. I want to start by thanking both of you, too, because I know how hard you have both worked and how much outreach you have done with your respective communities and districts, and I'm sure that work is going to show tonight. So take it over, Vice Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to ask Hillary or Allison to put up our slides here, or Mindy, I'm not sure who has them. And while I'm doing that, I want to thank the folks, Bridgette from the Department of Community Response, and LaShel Dozier and Christine Weickert for helping us with some of the data points. So, do we have our presentation? There we go.
We'll move on to District 7. Just kidding.
Yeah, please, go ahead. Let me say, too, I'm going to try to- I know we have, again, a very long schedule tonight and some major and very important issues, so I'm going to try to move through this pretty quickly. If any of my colleagues or others want to talk about it, or we can learn from each other, I'm happy to do follow-up with that. We also have a couple of folks that we brought with us tonight, Rochelle Dipmore from City of Refuge, and Terry Galvin from CASH. Talk a little bit from their angle of what's going on. So this is where we are today. Lots of caveats about, you know, talking to folks, how many people we've talked to, private landowners, all of that stuff. But here's where we are. So next slide, please. Keep going. So a little bit about District 5. This is our household income. District 5, more or less bordered on the north by Highway 50, on the east by Stockton Boulevard, on the south by Florin, on the west by Franklin Boulevard, and then we have the little triangle at the bottom, which is Zeeburg Park. And then you can see household incomes. We're a pretty diverse set of neighborhoods from SES-wise, from Southland Park in the Woodbine area, to Curtis Park and Southland Park at the upper end of the socioeconomic scale. Next slide, please. We wanted to look at ethnicity, again, because we're very diverse, and so we'll just kind of go through these. This is our white, non-Hispanic population, and all of these slides, the darker the color, the higher the percentage of population in that area. So let's go through these. Again, white, non-Hispanic, next. This is our African-American, black. Kind of South Oak Park is the most populated by this cohort of individuals, next. American Indian, Alaska Native, very small population, next. Asian, non-Hispanic, more in the south area. Pacific Islander, non-Hispanic, smaller population in the district, but what we have in the south area. Next. Hispanic population, this is the largest. At the last census, Oak Park, for example, was 38% Hispanic, 18% Caucasian, 17% African-American. Changed a little bit since then, but generally in the same direction. Next, please. We wanted to show you calls for service. So we have two maps coming up on the next slide. One is kind of a heat map of- These are 3-1-1 calls from May through May 2020 to 2021, and then calls around homeless encampments. Quite a few along the Highway 99 corridor, kind of on the right as you're looking at it. The big kind of red spot on homeless encampment on the heat map is around Colonial Heights. Next. Guiding principles. We've seen various forms of these. This is what we've been using as we've looked at these sites. I'm not going to go through this, but we certainly have this to share if anyone wants to take a look at it. Next, please. We want to make sure that we are serving all folks, and so as we think through this- next slide, please. We're looking at adults, we're looking at families, women, men. The shelter that we're currently building at the WX is really going to focus on men, children, transitional aged youth. We have a great shelter up in Sean Laloe's district. We need to do more of that. We have too many young people certainly out on the street, veterans, seniors, and LGBT, which we know is a very overrepresented population in the homeless population. Next slide. We've done a lot of community input and collaboration, and we've done this on a number of things. The pictures you're looking at are from the WX. For over a year, we held monthly community meetings. What's really important to us, and this is a core value in the work that we're doing around shelters, is that the shelters become part of the community within which they reside. So what we're doing here, and some of this is also Hiram Johnson when we were looking at the Florin Road Shelter, but what we are doing in these pieces is really trying to make sure, again, that there's ownership, that community-based organizations are being involved. These pictures actually were from our attempt at Florin Road Light Rail Station. We had a lot of opposition on that. We're going to bring back that site because we think it's really a very, very good site because of transportation, because of where it is, and the need in the neighborhood. On this one, we had probably a half a dozen community meetings, talked with a lot of folks, but again, ran into a lot of opposition. We think things have changed. We had a colleague who was not in favor of this across Florin Boulevard, and also a lot of opposition from some of the neighbors. But again, times are different, and so we want to give this another try because we think it's a really good site. Next, please. We really want to bring in our neighbors, as I said. You know, in the past, as I said, we've done- we did a lot of outreach around the Florin Road Station. We've done a tremendous amount of outreach around the WX Navigation Center, monthly meetings, as I said, for over a year, making sure that the community was involved, and I'm going to come back to that a little bit later. We worked with Caltrans to get the site. We worked with SACRT around the site on Florin Boulevard, and we'll continue to work with those organizations. These are some of the folks that we've worked with, who we know understand the depth of the challenge, and I believe are willing to help. Next, please. At this point, we want to ask our two guests, we're going to give them about three to four minutes each, but these are our partners in the Oak Park area and who have been partners certainly on the Navigation Center that we're building and in our efforts overall. So first, let me introduce Terry Galvin, who's the Executive Director of Community Against Sexual Harm or CASH. Terry?
Hi, good evening. I'm here to talk to you about the X Street Navigation Center and the community engagement that's been going on since at least the summer of 2019. Back then, there were several, as Jay pointed out, very lively community meetings hosted by council member, followed by the establishment of an advisory council. Many people attended these meetings, and there was then, and there still is, an interest in collectively creating something that works for Oak Park. As you know, the original timeline hasn't held up, but we are now back on track, and it's very exciting to see the progress being made to the physical shelter. Now the community work begins. From our meetings, it was obvious that Oak Park wanted a center at X Street that did more than shelter people, using the typical hands-off, provider-knows-best approach. Oak Park is an active community with many individuals and organizations already involved with our unhoused neighbors. We see this Navigation Center as an extension of the good work that is happening around us. We see this Navigation Center as an extension of the good work that is happening around us. We already have people who look out for each other in our neighborhoods, and we have some of the best services around. CASH has done regular outreach to the encampment areas on Alhambra, and we are currently working to house two women who are living there in tents. Our new full-time center coordinator at our drop-in center lived in this encampment for over a year, and she shows us what is possible when we give people a chance. Having safe and accessible emergency shelters with a referral system that respects the work being done on the ground will make a real difference in our community. I am hopeful that the provider chosen for this center will have a history of enthusiastic community engagement, and that they tap into the resources all around. My personal experience running emergency and transitional housing in Southern California, and a daily drop-in center here in Oak Park confirms that we need a space that not only shelters, but connects people with their community, because their lives after their homelessness ends will be lived in the community. I do believe this center can demonstrate what a collaborative investment looks like. And I really appreciate Jay for all his work on this so far.
Thank you, Terry. Rochelle, we'll turn it over to you and the wonderful work that City of Refuge is doing also in the neighborhood.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and Councilmember Shanir. You know, today I actually had a woman that came by to get something to eat at City of Refuge. We during COVID have been serving through the generous donations of several restaurants, about 250 meals a week. And this woman came by, and she was sitting in the rocking chair in the front of our building, and she was eating her meal. And I looked at her, and I thought, she needs to meet Terry Galvin. And so I said to her, I said, Roberta, do you know about CASH? And I just watched her whole body just light up, and this big smile come across her face. And she said, that's my family. I go to CASH all the time. And, you know, I think that the beautiful story and the narrative that's being written in Oak Park is truly a story of neighbors. You know, I love how Terry and I began to serve together because we didn't have a formal MOU, and we didn't have any grant. We were just two neighbors that really cared about people, organizations, that said, we know that there is a purpose, that we can serve people, and we're better together. And I think about Tasha from the food bank, you know, that rarely do I need to buy dressers or different things, because I think about the ongoing relationships that Tasha has, and how they provide, or whether wellspring. And it definitely is a community and a collective approach. The thing that I am, I'm just really excited about in the days to come with this shelter, is specifically with men, in feeding, in people coming through on a regular basis. What we get to do as community partners is we get to build trust. And just like Terry said, you know, we have two people that are on our staff in our Women and Children Shelter, and four people that are on our staff, paid staff at City of Refuge, who formerly were unhoused, formerly had histories of trauma, and rebuilding their lives. And what we've come to see is leadership. And as we just create spaces for trust, where it's a meal, it's a place to stay for the night, it's a connection, it's someone sitting in my rocking chair, someone showing up at X Street Shelter, someone showing up at Terry's facility, that every day we get to impart a belief that people can belong. And Oak Park is a beautiful landscape where we can, as a community, honor each other as organizations and leaders and neighbors in such a way that we speak into belonging. And it's incredible when people are given space. We as humans don't have to do the rescue, but people have leadership within them. They have things inside of them that we just get to see come to the surface and shine. So thank you so much, Councilmember Shanir and City Council for all of your hard work in finding treasures, because that's what people are, is their treasure. And we get to be a part of seeing them shine in our city.
Thanks, Rochelle. And these two incredible women and their wonderful organizations really epitomize what we're trying to do, to set an example of community ownership, excuse me, of the shelter itself. So whether its services and workforce development being provided by the Urban League, which is across the street, or food being provided by the Culinary Academy at American Legion High School, or food coming from the Sacramento Food Bank, neighbor works. We have so many organizations well-spaced right across the street that want to be involved, volunteers from Immaculate Conception Church. We think that the sustainability of the work is incredibly enhanced by the community itself coming together and saying, we own this, this is ours. And that's what we're trying to do through the RFP, making sure that the operator connects with those neighborhood organizations, and that's what we'll do once we open. So I'm excited about this. And again, I think it can send an example of the interactions between those who are unhoused and living in a navigation center, hopefully temporary as they move to permanent housing, and those in the neighborhood. So thank you, Rochelle, and thank you, Terry. I appreciate it. Thanks for coming by tonight and helping us out. So we're going to keep going. Next slide, please. These are some of the providers and support organizations, mostly that we hope help with the Navigation Center, but also that are helping generally. I'm just going to leave that up for a second. And all of these organizations are probably within half a mile of the Navigation Center, maybe a mile. Okay, next slide, please. So Mayor, we're getting to the numbers piece. So let's go ahead. Next slide. So these are our current shelter beds in Oak Park, and we do have the X Street Navigation Center listed in here at 100. That's the only one that's not open. Everything else that you see is ongoing. So this is about 300 beds, give or take a few. Okay, next. These are affordable housing developments in District 5. All of these are up and running. And so you have the Arbers Senior, which is in the heart of Oak Park, Curtis Park Senior Court, which is 90 beds in Crocker Village in Curtis Park, Glen Ellen, which is near the City Corp Yard and near the airport, the Guild Theater in Oak Park, they have 12 units upstairs, and then Kelsey Village on Stockton Boulevard. Those are current units. Next slide, please. These are the totals. We have 489 affordable units. This is data given to us by the Housing Authority and by ZIP Code. So a total of 489 units currently. Next slide, please. Again, this is where we are, 489 current affordable housing units, which I just said, 280 shelter beds. That was the 300 number. Moving forward, Donner Field is Eden Housing. They'll be doing 70 units. That's on Stockton Boulevard, around 10th Avenue. 3900 Broadway is Broadway and 19th, oh, I'm sorry, Broadway and 39th. That'll be 43 units. That's next to the Arbers. And then on Broadway, EAH is 150 units, and that's at 19th. That's a border that I share with Councilmember Valenzuela. We also have a couple of others under discussion, some affordable housing, 150 to 200 units at a site that we're looking at. And then the future shelter sites, which we're going to go through, is 450 to 750 beds or units, depending on if they're safe parking, or tents, or cabins, or multi-purpose cabins. This does not include hotel vouchers. But that's kind of, Mayor, I think that's the number that you're looking for. And that's 450 to 750, plus all the others that are above it. So let's go to the next slide, please.
So Jay, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you're taking appropriate credit for the 100 at WX.
Yeah, that's part of our 300.
That's part of your 300, but when you talk about 450 to 550, you should add another 100 to that, because that's not open yet.
Right, right. We'll show you the numbers as they go in total.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay. And so we're going to very quickly run through the sites. We did this at a community meeting last week. Again, the caveat is some of these are private land. We haven't negotiated or talked deeply to some of the landowners. There will be challenges with some of these sites, but this is what we're looking at at this point. And we've encouraged folks in our district to call us and let us know about additional sites, and some have already. So let's run through these pretty quickly. You can see, we just wanted to give you a map of where they are in the district, kind of north to south, from Oak Park down onto Florin Road. 2709 Florin Road in Indian Lane, this is at the RT Station. Again, this is where we tried once before. We did not get to go forward on it. We think that it is an incredible site. You have transportation on premises, lots of amenities. It's paved, there's electricity, there's water. Habitat for Housing is behind. They own about 15 acres. And then next door, I believe they have 27 houses on Indian Lane. So that's that one. Next. Franklin Boulevard, this is the old Campbell Soup. And this is primarily in the county, so we want to work with our county folks, our county colleagues on this. There's a little slice of it in the city, and we'll be meeting with the owner soon. Kendra Macias-Reed from Franklin Boulevard is helping set that up, because they have a relationship there. And the numbers in per ends are what we think we could do there. Some of these, we're not quite sure. This is a large lot behind La Esperanza on Franklin Boulevard. It's kind of a connector between South City Farms and neighborhoods to the south here, and Franklin Boulevard, but a very good lot that we need, we're working to get in touch with the landlord, with the owner of the land. Next. Sutterfield Road, this is about two blocks from my house. This is a parking lot that used to be, there used to be a store here, and there's a small restaurant that's owned by the Children's Home, which is no longer in business. We think this might be a good site, and there's certainly a need in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. This is City of Refuge, right next door, and I think they're very amenable. And this could be small houses, or possibly even tents, on Martin Luther King Boulevard, right across from the community center. We want to work, continue to work with Rochelle on this one. Next. This is 47th Avenue. There may be some challenges here. It's next to the airport with flyover. But we have a huge vacant lot right on 24th Street that I think would be very excellent for lots of different uses. Next slide, please. 3736 Stockton Boulevard, this is a private lot. It's fairly small. We think this would be a good lot for safe parking. And most of the vetting, the initial phase of vetting has been done by Bridget Dean from the Department of Community Response. So a lot more work to do, but we're moving forward on a lot of these. Next slide, please. This is also a private lot. This is actually owned by someone I used to work with quite a while ago in the Secretary of Education's office, and he left and moved into trying to find spaces for nonprofits to work. We think this would be a great place to do tiny homes. Next slide, please. This is a Caltrans property. Again, this is the other one we looked at. This is right on the corner of Fruit Ridge and Franklin, right by Highway 99. There are some challenges. It is across the street and down the block from La Familia. Although La Familia has moved a lot of its operations to Maple School, but that's certainly a concern. It would be a great tiny homes. It's got a building there that you could probably retrofit to be a kitchen and put bathrooms in as well. Next slide, please. So how many beds are you looking at? As I said, lots of caveats. Depends on the zoning. It depends on the type of housing, tents, tiny cabins, things like that, modulators. What infrastructure is on the site, and how much of the site are we using? But overall, we're looking at about 1,000 affordable housing units, either built or in process, and around 1,000 beds. And actually, Katie Valenzuela and I were talking about this. I'm not sure if beds is the right term, since it could be safe parking and could be multiple people. I think she said units, maybe? I'm forgetting.
Beds or spaces?
Spaces. So however, we're qualifying.
Spots.
What is it?
Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Katie.
Oh, I said spots.
Spots, okay.
Spots.
So this, so how many spots?
Spots.
Again, about 1,000 on shelter beds or safe parking, about 1,000 on affordable housing. And I believe that is our presentation.
Very impressive. Thank you, and very, very thoughtful. Can we, can we get a copy of the PowerPoint? I'd like to look at it. If you could actually email it to me, I want to look at it. Thank you.
We can do that. And again, I tried to run that through. It was about 20 minutes. Want to thank Rochelle and Terry again for coming by, but more importantly, for the work that they do in the community. It is so needed, and it is so good. So thank you, guys, and we'll continue to work. And I did make, I did mention across the street from Florin Road, saying it was Hiram Johnson. I should have said Burbank, because obviously it's Burbank High School, not.
Neither Burbank.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Very impressive. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Gedda for his presentation, then we'll open it up to public testimony and comments from, and questions from our colleagues.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleague, you know, Vice Mayor Jay Shanir. He and I have been working together on a lot of issues, particularly along Stockton Boulevard. So thank you, Councilmember Shanir. Let me push this over, and then if we could, I think we've got two of our guests that are also queuing up here, but let me put this on here. Okay, so for some of those in District 6, you may have seen this already, but we're hoping to get this information out far and wide. So first, you know, talking, we're going to try to break through, go through a little bit about grounding the conversation with some of our, you know, alumni of the programs, folks who've experienced homelessness and moved into a better place now, and also from our advocates who have been working with the homeless. We're also going to talk a little bit about our working group and the voices that we've heard from the time in that we've been doing our community outreach, which has started since the week that we voted on this action, we formed our working group, and then go through kind of the guiding principles and our approach to this issue. And then finally, with our Good Neighbor Policy, we'll skim through that since we did a council presentation on that, and then the District 6 sites here. So we'll move quickly here. First, I want to take this opportunity to welcome Kristin Woodward, alumni of St. John's Program for Real Change. And Kristin, thanks for being here today. I know it was a challenge as well. You were, you know, on your way also to pick up your children, and so thank you for being here today. Kristin, would you mind telling us a little bit about how a program that has been serving many people in District 6 has helped you in a time of need, and how's prepared you to move and transition back into the community? Would you mind giving us just a little bit of your experience?
Yes, of course. And thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. St. John's has definitely changed my life in multiple ways, many of my friends' lives in multiple ways. When I went in, I had the clothes on my back, and that was it. I didn't have my daughter. And it was a very trying time. And they take you in, and they take care of you, and they are there for you. They comfort you. I was able to get my daughter back. I was able to get an amazing job. I was able to buy my Lexus. I was able to move out. But one hard thing about St. John's is you, you go through so many trials and tribulations. You learn so much new things about yourself that you didn't know. And then once you get all of these things, you come to a point where you do need to move out. And unfortunately, half of my friends have been on waiting lists for Section 8, for SHRA, for a year and a half, two years. And that's just to get an interview, to see if they can even get in. We do have USA properties through St. John's, and they do help us, you know, place people there. But unfortunately, we only have maybe two that actually have a few slots every now and then. So then it comes to the point where half of these women, they come from bad situations, where they've been, you know, abused, molested, into drugs, and they don't have that backbone. They don't have that background of education. They don't know what a FICO score is, or how to get into a place. And when they're out on their own and trying to find something, it's very, very difficult. I completely love the fact that St. John just got their mobile homes on site. And I'm a little upset, because I definitely would have wanted to be a part of that. They look beautiful, and I can't wait to go back and be able to be a volunteer and to advocate for these women and show them that you can get out on your own, because it was a struggle for me. You know, I did everything I was supposed to do, and I got to the point where I was at the end of my program, and I couldn't find a home. I couldn't find a place. And then it's a strike in your heart, and you don't know what to do. You're like, why did I get this far? And now I have nowhere to go. Like, was it all for nothing? But St. John's definitely stood behind me and was my backbone during this whole entire time, and I could have not ever have asked for a better place. My daughter, to this day, asks, Mom, when can we go back? ever have asked for a better place. My daughter to this day asks, Mom, when can we go back to St. John's? Can we go to our old room? So, you know, that was very impactful for her. A kid going into, a four-year-old at that, going into a program and getting adapted and loving the people that she's around is very difficult. To get children, I mean, they come from foster families. They come from CPS. They come from, you know, aunts and uncles and whatever have you. And they're not used to being with their mom in an area with multiple hundreds of different women and children. And, you know, for her to say that makes me, makes my heart, you know, cry and smile all at the same time. And there's nothing that I, I could ever ask for more than St. John's. St. John's definitely put me where I needed to be in life. And I want to give back as much as possible to them and anything that I can do to further assist them in that or being an advocate just for the city council and helping, I would love to do that. Again, I love that I'm speaking of Palm St. John's because they definitely changed my life. Majority of the women that I know, they can say the same exact thing today. Most of them work for the state, are working for UC Davis. I work for a structural engineer company. Multiple, multiple things and possibilities can change your life. We just need that support after the program. Where can we go? Where can we have that backbone so we know we have a roof over our head at that time?
Thank you, Kristin. I appreciate you and all that you have done here. And I think the, 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 one of the things here is that when St. John's first was being proposed, there was a lot of objection to it about bringing a facility, a center to help people into the neighborhood and in the District Six. And now it's, it's a part of the fabric. There's a lot of supporters. People are working together. And the story here is that it's, it's not just about the location, but it's also the after, the support that needs to come after that. How do you make that continuum of care? And, and one of the advocates that have been helping us connect with people and community has been not only a neighborhood advocate and leader. I got a chance to know her with the, the Friends of the Colonial Heights Library and the Black Book Fair, but who has been advocating for the, our unhoused neighbors and talking about how it's important that we understand that folks who are on the street are our neighbors. They want to come back into the neighborhood and need that assistance because as you heard from Kristin, doing it on their own at that point and stage of need is very difficult. So let me pass it over to a person who is working every single day and even on Sundays, this Sunday, meeting families who are at our Motel Six here, Fay Kennedy. Good afternoon, Fay.
Thank you very much. Once again, my name is Fay Wilson Kennedy and I've lived in District Six since nineteen ninety-seven with my family. I'm a co-founder of the Southeast Village Neighborhood Association and also an active member in the Sacramento Poor People Campaign. Thank you for joining me and members of District Six Master Plan Committee, community members both housed and unhoused, joined with Councilmember Ed Agueta, local businesses, local neighborhood associations, local community-based organizations and faith groups to plan, discuss, conduct site visits, gather public information, listen and talk to our neighbors. Like a beautiful quilt, with lovely, beautiful threads, textures and shapes, we create a plan that reflects our collective values and thoughts that all our neighbors need to be treated with dignity and respect and most of all housed. So on behalf of District Six Plan, we like to thank you and I turn it back to Councilmember Gueda and thank you very much.
Thank you, Fay. Appreciate it and for your consistent hard work on this. Since day one, we've been meeting almost once to twice at lunch a week in our master plan and, and everyone has busy lives in that timeframe. And even Fay was able to help us recruit an unhoused member of our committee. And so this is our committee members, you know, from Linda Louis, who was with the Sacramento Chinese Indo-Friendship Association, folks from the business community of the Little Saigon area, the Stockton Boulevard Partnership, the industrial partners, all the neighborhood associations, the service providers that provide housing and support for our unhoused like Mercy Housing, Mutual Housing and Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and you heard from St. John's, including the Stockton Boulevard Community Corporation and most recently the support of UC Davis Health and Sacramento State from their Student Affairs Cares Office about how do we all work together to work, put this, put a plan together? The District Six, you know, is, is a challenging district when we began to look at how do we create a hundred beds in each district? One thing we found was that there is very little city-owned property. That was one of our biggest challenges. Most of the prop, most of the area was annexed into the city here and the properties that do remain were remnants of street easements. And so being able to access a location was a challenge. It's mostly industrial. As you can see, half of the district is heavy industrial. To the furthest to the right, all of the landfills are in the area, the transfer facilities. And it was where there were two very large gravel mining pits that, that go from the power in area all the way to the city limits. And, and the, the northern area by the river, if you go from Fair Oaks and Howe, all the way down to Stockton and Florida, a very diverse community. But the benefits and opportunities here that, that are is that we do have many of our business partners or P-bits and so many neighbors from different walks of life who agreed that they say we want to find a collective effort to find a solution here. This is, you know, a map of, of all of the different locations where we've had calls for service. And as you can tell, you know, one of the things we like to highlight is every neighborhood assumes that the issue is affecting only their neighborhood. But when in fact, it is across the board. And if you were to zoom out into the city, this also would, would show that everyone has a stake in the game here. We see obviously our corridors being places where there are vacant areas and you may see a little more of a collection there. But in general, it is across the board. And that was one of the things that, that, that we came to acknowledge as a community from all of our points of view, that homelessness is, is something that is a manifestation of the failures of all of our bureaucracy, all of our programs and all of our systems and services. And we acknowledge that, that that's how it became so complicated. Our neighbors are experiencing homelessness, again, not just here, but throughout the city. And the only way to, to find a solution is for District Six to have a component that links in to a citywide comprehensive plan, not just a district-specific plan. We've met at least twenty-plus weekly meetings with all of us together. And if you can imagine how to coordinate calendars with over twenty people to have these regular meetings, it was a challenge, but everyone committed their time. We had public virtual meetings, not only in English town halls, but we had great translators in both Cantonese and Vietnamese. And I got to tell you, the response that we had from many folks who participated were that they had never had a in-culture, in-language presentation like this before on any subject. And it being something as controversial as how do we cite locations to help our unhoused folks? Quite frankly, we did not encounter any animosity. People were much more open to it. So one of the big messages that came across is, is we've got to do more in, in culture, in community to talk about these issues. We worked with our neighborhood associations, our, our business associations and consistently kept the same conversation and message to refine our plan. So, so in this point, I want to just thank our partners for becoming Zoom zombies for all the meetings we did have. Community voices were very common from what we've heard. People want to see immediate solutions, but they also want long-term solutions. They don't want to just replicate this issue or put a band-aid on it. They're looking for something that is sustainable, something is long-term and that we address health and safety issues in the community. And that, that we work, and we've heard it before, that there needs to be better collaboration between city, county and state partners. And the good thing about this effort is we've all used our tools and resources to be able to do that. Our guiding principles were to acknowledge and continue to educate our community and our own members. We come from different neighborhoods, but we're all one village, is that we need a multi-tier approach that is holistic because not everyone experiencing homelessness is coming from the same experience. They have different needs. And the more we talk about that, the more that we can avoid getting pigeonholed in one type of solution and understanding the, the need for, to meeting people where they are. The other issue that we said is we, we needed to consider the consideration of land availability and resources. We know that was a challenge going in. So we worked with a lot of our property owners and landowners to make sure that we could help use their expertise. We had members of our local Realtors to join us who are neighbor, members of neighborhood associations and use those business relationships to find property owners since we didn't have any public land. Most of all, I think the biggest message we received, particularly from folks like St. John's, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, Mercy Housing, is not to overcomplicate the system. We're all interconnected. We need to be making sure that, that as we move forward in a citywide district plan with the District Six location, that we're, we're make, we're making our connections, our data collection, all so that we can share information because homelessness doesn't just exist within political boundaries of council districts. In fact, that's probably the worst way of identifying a plan is using a political boundary of that. But it is the one that we are working with today and leveraging our strengths of where, where we have successes as we've heard in previous presentations, to use those resources and expanding those resources. This is a slide that, we were fortunate that Sacramento Self-Help Housing was also part of our working group because we have a neighbor that lives in District Six who also happened to do the data for Sacramento Self-Help Housing. So we're fortuitous. But it, it was one of those things, one of these clear examples that we have to talk about, how do we also reduce the inflow? That we can't focus just on crisis response because if we focus only on crisis response, then we won't be able to address the issue of housing stability. And, and that's the way we make a life change. And so making sure that we have a system of how, and bringing all our complexities together is the only way our plan is going to work. It's not enough just to find sites. We know that's the case, but making sure that we have a system that actually brings and networks people together as they move in and out and through the, their continuum of support. We looked and broke it down to, to better message this to our community. We broke it into three approaches. Our short-term emergency shelter, our immediate transitional shelter and long-term shelter. For our short-term shelters, like tent structures, tiny cabins, you know, looking at those existing facilities, safe parking. Our medium-term, we, we wanted to focus on scattered site models. We already have a good experience of that already in District Six of renting or owning homes in neighborhoods that we can have a scattered site model to look at manufactured housing or modular housing, much like we're, we're doing at St. John's as a different model, but these are eighteen-month programs. Our short-term is immediate weeks to months. Our trend, our medium-term is months to a year, two years. And our long-term is permanent supportive housing. How do we make sure that we are both addressing people falling into homelessness and also helping people get back on their feet? So if that comes with motel conversions, affordable housing development and permanent supportive housing, which also can be the scattered site model that Sacramento Self-Help Housing does. And our short-term solutions, we opened up the Lemon Hill Warming Center where there was a parking lot available. We were, we had over two-hundred-and-twenty-one contacts in a, in a very short period of February twenty-fourth through March thirty-first. It took us a couple of weeks to get the message out because, just because you open up a location doesn't mean that, that folks are going to come in. We needed that outreach. So we had folks like Fay Kennedy and others and First Steps Community Services going out there. When we looked at also addressing the quality of life issues of some of the, the trash and solid waste impact and in vacant lots, we connected and worked with our community, the Department of Community Response, and then connected individuals with our, the hotel vouchers to be able to clean up and remove debris. And then finally, making sure that we were looking at immediate resources for folks that needed porta-potties at that time. Our medium-term solution, we were excited that we're in the middle of this manufactured housing process, the modern-day mobile homes. At St. John's, these are examples of manufactured homes where we, where we looked, took an old parking lot that wasn't being used and said, could we use this to immediately bring housing, not spend two or three years, but use the emergency ordinance that we had and also through Project Home Key to bring in these homes with bedrooms and kitchens and living space and even a porch to be able to build community. This is current St. Program, St. John's Program for Real Change, which currently serves two-hundred-and-forty women daily and yearly five-hundred-and-five women and children as well. This project itself will add fifty-five additional locations of mid, of medium-term housing for families. In our, what we've looked at also was that parking lot, that same parking lot. What could we do in that parking lot? And what we said is if we look at a different model as well, to your right, this parking lot is that one where we're putting those manufactured homes. But those little slots, we looked at what could we do if we use container housing? Retrofitting shipping containers with insulation, electrical, air, air and heating and bringing that down. And actually, the cost was about ten to twenty thousand dollars depending on the model that we use. But we looked at that and said, could we, how many could we actually fit and build a community? Well, that's about a hundred location, a hundred units there in that same parking lot that we're doing for the fifty-five women and children at St. John's. And those, that concept of looking at something outside the box of that shipping container, these have a lifespan of thirty-plus years because the shipping containers themselves are, are virtually indestructible as long as that they're, they're painted correctly. And then the interior is where you have a shorter lifespan. But we looked at how do we maximize our space and be able to look at areas where we have vacant lots, parking lots, industrial zones, and to be able to create communities with that. So Pride Industries, which is in District Six and actually has contracts with the City of Sacramento, already does work with individuals with disabilities, folks who have, need mental health, who, who have, need assistance for substance abuse. And they do workforce training in internship programs. So our plan is not just to find locations, but to work with an organization like Pride Industries to be able to link and provide housing, the employment services, the mental health services in these locations. So we're not just quote-unquote warehousing people. We're creating a pathway out, out in the transition. But transportation was a big issue that, that is a challenge because of the industrial area. The, the long-term solution, we have motel conversions. We have a very successful motel conversion already on Stockton Boulevard and we found another motel in District Six that we're approaching the property owner on this. Currently, we have eighty to a hundred units on Stockton Boulevard. That but on the upper right is the Mercy Housing Boulevard Court. Again, this is an example where many in the community were concerned and very opposed to bringing in permanent supportive housing for eighty to a hundred extremely low-income and homeless and disabled homeless individuals. The, the, this has been a success, but the challenge is only five to ten units open up a year. So it goes to the issue of capacity. Mutual Housing Lemon Hill also services extremely low-income and formerly homeless individuals, but their return, but the turnover rate is only seven units per year. So again, and even our housing voucher, the numbers are very tight. So this goes to the issue about addressing our, our long-term housing. So our plan also looks at supporting tonight. I know we moved one item to next week, but future long-term housing like the Mercy Housing, a project on the Old John's Furniture Site, using this vacant lot that will build two-hundred units and twenty-seven of extremely low-income housing units for formerly unhoused individuals. And then also the Mercy, the mutual housing, the Old San Juan Motel Site, which will also bring in a hundred-and-forty-eight units and sixteen units of permanent housing for low-income and formerly unhoused individuals. Again, the point here is, is that we have to balance both the long-term and also the immediate, but it's still not enough to meet our, our needs. With Habitat for Humanity, this is along Power and Road. Thirteen homes for, again, those in the extremely low-income project and even in the workforce housing side. While there's only twenty-three affordable units, we want to make sure that we're trying to push, even when we're building workforce housing, that we push the, the inclusion of affordable housing units there. Our Good Neighbor Policy, we talked a lot about. This is something that we worked with to get examples and from input from all our neighborhoods and other cities and other jurisdictions and guiding those principles on those issues. I won't go into this detail because we talked a lot about it already in the last council meeting. But I think to the, the last thing, our siting subcommittee worked a lot on identifying sites. That was the most challenging piece. So to that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Jaskey, who's our, our last presenter here from, who's a resident of District Six and also been very active with Sacramento Area Congregation together. Congregation together in trying to support our folks who are unhoused. Thanks for being here, Mike.
Thank you. Mayor Steinberg, council members, my name is Mike Jaskey. You usually hear from me representing Sec Act advocating for the development of a comprehensive, coordinated plan, but here today, I'm part of Commissioner Gera's D6 district siting team. There are some slides that will follow that get into some of the specific details, but I just wanted to give an overview of the fact that we've identified over 20 sites that could become facilities for a wide range of different types of projects, safe parking, temporary shelters, sleeping cabin villages, multipurpose, high-service campuses like that Pride Industries project or others, affordable and permanent housing. All of that is necessary to help the homeless people among us start their journey to something more permanent and improving their lives. As he indicated, those sites are, or he will show, those sites are scattered across the whole district. Developing these sites will require multiple permitting mechanisms. Some of them can be cited using the temporary shelter ordinance that was adopted in January. More permanent ones may require conditional use permit processes, or in some cases, maybe there's by right zoning already that would allow them to proceed. Developing these sites into facilities also requires a lot of money, upfront capital, operating costs, and that varies a lot depending on how you take one of these sites and what kind of facility you turn it into. We should expect that of these 24 sites that will show up as dots on a chart in a few minutes, that some will move forward, that some will fail for reasons that a property owner just won't come to an agreement that the city can afford, or some objection surfaces when we're getting into the details of the suitability of a particular site. So additional sites need to be identified as further candidates for analysis. And we, of course, will need although, as many as those sites or more if we implement the goal of trying to bring all unsheltered people off the streets and onto their individual path toward permanent housing. And finally, as a council member said just a few minutes ago, close partnerships with many entities, the county, the continuum of care, service providers, the medical and behavioral health communities, people with lived experiences needed to turn these sites into functioning facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry, I was on mute there, but Mike lives in the north area of the district and Fay lives on the south area of the district. And one thing we realize is we've never had this much in the last, I think, all of us were talking about, over a decade, many meetings of district members from different parts of the district meeting all at once every single week, and it actually brought us in a very positive place. So throughout the entire district, what we identified was, when we first started, I think in total, we probably had about 40 to 50 different sites. We've narrowed it back down to 24 sites that can be used for city-owned property. There was only one remnant of city-owned property that we found next to Morrison Creek that we could potentially use for a tiny home project. The other public agencies like Caltrans or the county, maybe RT, we found five other sites, and the size of those sites lend themselves, you'll see 300 protectional beds or spots to 80 vehicles. We broke it up because we have a lot of parking lots in District Six, so we figured out how can we use parking lots and also vacant sites. Churches, seven church sites that met our ideal area, and we've been getting a lot more progress with, working with our local churches. Paved property, which gives us more versatility, particularly if we want to bring in manufactured homes already where you, they're basically on a hitch and wheels and they show up and you've got a three-bedroom or a two-bedroom with a one-bathroom house, or even unpaved land where you can put the container models. The good thing about those container models is you don't need to be paved, it could be gravel lots, so it doesn't require as much ground preparation as it would. Although when we worked with them, we said, you know, what can we do to keep up as much as high to code to be able to have as much options? So all of those spaces and the power in alliance, and I do want to thank also Eric Edelmeier at Jackson Properties, who used their resources to identify vacant lots and spots. We said between all those spaces, we can have up to a potential of 1,386 spots based on vehicles and spaces by using those models, safe grounds, the manufactured homes, the modular homes, and those, and even the campus model. We did find one hotel, motel that we're looking at with that. So I'll go back to end it with this slide again, because it's happening everywhere in the district, and this is more of a message for constituents of District Six, that it's important that we think about when we're looking at siting, that it isn't in just one area of the district, that it isn't just in one area of the city. I think there's an opportunity to do a lot of things throughout the entire district and remember that if we all work together, we can actually achieve something. So I'll end there, Mr. Mayor, and folks can continue us. We're going to have future community meetings about those specific sites with our district.
Well, again, I just want to say, very impressive. Not just the number, which I know, you know, you all rightfully tell me I'm focused on because I am, but it's not just the number, it's also the process. I mean, I really think what's going on here throughout the city frankly is unprecedented. I mean, we're engaging, the council members, you are engaging your community leaders in your community in the most intensive ways to try to solve our most pressing problem. And Councilman Geta, it's another example. I mean, the number of community meetings, the outreach, and then the end result, which I know there is going to be a whole lot more work to actually achieve, not only for you but for all of these sites. It's very, very encouraging. Thank you. Madam Clerk, how much public testimony do we have for both Councilmember Vice Mayor Cheney and Councilmember Geta's presentations?
I have three callers, Mr. Mayor.
In total?
Total.
Well, if you believe that people only call in if they're not happy, I think you guys have done a pretty good job working out in your community. So let's hear from the three members. Maybe they are happy, who knows?
You may have my first caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Honorable City Council. My name is Isaac Gonzalez. I'm a resident of District Six, and I just wanted to call in this evening to voice my support for the proposal this evening and the discussion between District Five, District Six, and every council member, and just throw my full-hearted support behind this entire process. There's not a day go by where residents in the City of Sacramento don't see their unhoused neighbors suffering in anguish as they deal with the elements outdoors. We know that this crisis has been building in our city for a decade, and I am so proud as a lifelong resident of the City of Sacramento to see the council unified together in a common goal to address this issue, this crisis, in a holistic fashion that will hopefully finally provide some relief to our neighbors. I'm also very comforted in the fact that the outreach has been so extensive as to bring neighbors into the loop early and often, providing feedback and creative support so that the final product will be even better thanks to the help of our neighbors. I would ask you please to continue your extensive outreach and to reach out to the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association in District Six so that we can help you continue those outreach efforts as the sites that are identified, finalize their details, and transition towards an operational status. Once again, highly commend you all for this effort. The resources that are required are obviously large, but the time is finally now for the City of Sacramento to really begin addressing this crisis in a way that allows for our unhoused neighbors to be, to find shelter and to hopefully continue their lives with some humility and some dignity and for all of Sacramento to understand that this is a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Manuel Bonrostro, and I am a resident of Council District Six and the Elm Hurst Neighborhood. I'm also a member of the Unhoused Working Group for District Six. I am calling to show my support for Item 32 and the work that the Office of Councilmember Guerra and other city staff have been doing in partnership with the working group to create the plan that you saw today. I am pleased to see that a variety of housing and assistance options are included within this plan, along with short, medium, and long-term considerations. This type of approach will let us meet the immediate and current needs of our unhoused neighbors and expand affordable housing opportunities for the future. Solving the unhoused crisis that Sacramento and California are experiencing will be a challenge that will require creative thinking as well as the support of our county and state governments. However, I am pleased to see that the city and District Six are stepping up to do their part and to increase our efforts. Thank you again, and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ian Barlow, and as a Sierra Oaks resident, a member of the working group for the District Six Master Plan for the Unhoused, I'm proud of and encouraged by all the hard work and dedication that's gone into District Six's proposals and the leadership provided on these issues by Councilmember Geta and his office. It's been an inclusive process and at all times advanced by taking all stakeholders' voices into account from people experiencing homelessness, residents, property owners, and business owners. So this is a significant and complex citywide challenge, but I believe District Six is making great strides and stepping up to do its part. So I'm calling in this evening to strongly support Item 32. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's open it up to colleagues and Madam Clerk, if you could help me here as I'm in the chambers tonight.
I have Councilmember Valenzuela first.
Go ahead, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Thank you. Hopefully, I don't cut out on my internet because I had to call in because great timing for the internet to go glitchy, but I want to commend my colleagues. This is really exciting. That's a lot of sites. I mean, dozens of sites in the city, and I'm really, yeah, just impressed with the amount of stakeholder engagement you all did and the sites that you've identified. I'm feeling just excited, like, I don't know, I'm starting to picture, put together the whole picture of the citywide plan now with like every additional presentation, and I'm starting to see what's possible, and I think you're really setting this up with success for success by naming as many sites, knowing that there's still a lot of work to do to land those sites. I think you're really like setting yourselves and the city up for a lot of success as we continue this work, and I just, I just want to commend you two. I think this is really great, and I don't have any other questions because you did a good job in your presentation. I just wanted to say like, thank you for doing all of that, and, but I'm really looking forward to working with you all to get this moving. So, thank you.
Thank you. And who is next?
Mr. Mayor, I have no more hands raised.
Okay. Well, again, very thorough. Yes.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
So, you know, I've been on the council about six and a half years, and working on homelessness has been a big piece of the puzzle. Jay has been on the council longer than I have. He's been very involved in the homeless conundrum the whole time. When he tried to get the floor and site together, you know, I know the angst of the neighbors because I've experienced it as well, but he's a trooper. You know, it is a good site, and there will be opposition to many of these sites, you know, that's guaranteed. Not all of these sites are going to be able to be put into play. It's great to catalog them, it's very important to form a game plan. You know, people will still have a lot of angst about many sites, but, you know, it's important work. We need to move forward with this, and it is encouraging to, certainly to have council members locating areas in their districts where there are possibilities. So I appreciate Jay and Eric also for doing this work, and we'll see where we go with it. You know, I won't say too much more because I have a lot to say certainly in my presentation, but, you know, this is a problem that we have to meet head-on. I have maybe a little bit different take on it, but this is a great exercise, and I appreciate you guys' work.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Rick Jennings.
Yeah, I just want to kind of add my congratulations to District Five and District Six. Just an incredible job, just building on the work that has already been done by our colleagues that have presented already. You guys keep raising the bar for those of us who are coming after you, and so with the presentation, the stakeholder engagement, the number of sites that you've identified, the short-term, medium, and long-term plan that you develop, I just want to say, hey, impressive job, and it does, like the mayor said, not only gets to the sites, I mean, to the beds or the spots, as Councilmember Valenzuela says, it gets to the number of sites that you've identified, and as Councilmember Harris said, you know, a lot of these sites might not come to fruition, but the more sites that we identify, the more opportunity we have to create housing for our unhoused population. So I just want to say, great job. It was impressive to see the people involved, it was impressive to see the plan in place and the presentation that you made tonight. You can tell that your heart is in it, so great job. I'm looking forward to following in your footsteps.
Thank you. No more. Okay, I just make a final comment, which is, again, outstanding, outstanding work. And there's no but to that in any way, but it just, I reflect on the fact that this first cut at sites, that maybe the harder work with the community and with the members and with private property owners and even with city or other public land, the hard work ahead may be over the next couple of weeks and months to actually perfect the sites, right? Because how are we going to go from conceptual, which is the right thing to do, to put it all out there for consideration? How do we go then to actually controlling, owning, approving the site so that we can put the money, the operator, and the operation to it? And so for all of us, I just want to encourage us to show the same urgency and intensity at that stage of it. And in that light, we are going to, I know there are interviews being conducted tomorrow to hire a top-notch outside consultant to assist our great staff and the members to take all this raw information and to help us put it together in a way that prioritizes and that is, is when we finally pass it, that it is a resolution that is actionable and ready to be implemented. So a lot of really good and important work ahead. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could say one thing really quickly?
Yeah, please.
I want to make sure, and I hope, and I think I speak for all of my colleagues on this, that we recognize our staff. For me, it's Allison and Hillary Coy who've been working on this issue. I mean, this is something that I think across the board, we've taken on in addition to everything that we're doing to try to meet the needs of our constituents on an ongoing basis. So I don't think we can get through the evening without saying thank you. It's still a lot more nights and weekends in addition, again, to everything else that they've been doing. So for me, again, I want to thank Allison Jo and Hillary Coy, Jasleen, also on my staff, and Yuli. Again, one more thing, but something that's really important, and also want to thank Bridget and her staff. They're trying to make it through every day, and then we ask them for more to help us put these presentations and vetting and everything together. So that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I agree. I wanted to, you know, we've spent so much time in this, I mean, there's so many lunch meetings where we got each, got so comfortable with each other, everyone was not ashamed to eat while on camera, you know, the amount of hours and time that these You know, the amount of hours and time that it's taken us to actually do this has been tremendous, and it's because of our staff. The last thing I want to bring out as well is that, is one of the benefits that we saw, and we should use this more, is why I think it helped us get together more is using our partners that have been successful. The fact is, we have two programs that are adjacent to schools, and we've never had issues. I mean, that's one thing, because they have ambassador programs. They reach out to folks. And we try to remove that stigma. And so I think the more we do that as we move forward, the better we're going to be able to address the concerns that people have. Because there are people who have brought up the issue of concerns about citing. But again, using our successes has helped us in a big way.
Very good. Next week and the week after will continue throughout the city, throughout the districts. And we look forward to those presentations as well. All right, members, let us now move to the last item on the agenda tonight, a very important item. And that is the use of force issue, which we talked about on April thirteenth. And I want to begin by thanking Dr. Letitia Watson, who is the director of our Office of Public Safety Accountability for putting together the staff report and for her excellent work. I want to thank the commission, Chair Guerrero, and all the members of the commission for the untold numbers of hours you have put into grappling with these very serious sets of issues. I want to thank the city manager and his team, the police department, the city attorney, who's worked very hard on this, and her staff, and our Department of Human Relations. And what you see in the staff report itself is a matrix that summarizes in pretty good detail what the commission recommended when it comes to this issue of the use of deadly force. And then how the police department, the Office of the City Attorney, the Human Resources Department, and the Office of Public Safety Accountability, their opinion on what the commission has recommended. And let's just say that when it comes to an issue of great import, and this is an issue of great import because we are talking about life and death and the use of deadly force, and an issue of great passion, that there will be disagreement. And it's also fair to say, for everybody, that sometimes the stakeholders, we all do this. We all sometimes talk a little bit past each other. And so I worked with several of my colleagues, and I want to point out and call out, if you will, Councilmember Katie Valenzuela, who, along with Councilmember Vang, I know, called for a review of the use of force policy some months ago. Mayor Protem Angelique Ashby, been very helpful in terms of talking and working this through. And I know that I was, you know, always limited by the Brown Act. But when I looked at this, these range of recommendations and different ways of looking at the language, I knew that if I didn't try to do my job as mayor and try to, and try to create some consensus, at least try to create some consensus, that we would be here all night, and we probably would be talking past each other, arguing for different nuances and different wordsmiths, and what does this term mean, and what does that term mean? And so tonight, what I want to urge the council to do, as I wrote in the memo, is to reach a decision that does not outright reject the strongly-held views of leaders. For we in fact have one, more than one, but certainly one mutual goal. And that is to keep everyone safe for both the protection of the community and its officers and to reduce the chances and circumstances of an officer having to use or using deadly force. So how did we approach this? And if you'll just beg my indulgence for a moment, I want to walk you through this because I hope that you will see a little bit of the give and take and the logic behind the memorandum that I put forward yesterday, hopefully in time, I think in time, for everybody to have thorough chance to review it. And I want to make one other preliminary comment, because I know there's a lot of questions about, well, why should a police commission, or a city council for that matter? I'm not a law enforcement expert. That's not my training. Why should I be questioning the standard put forward by the experts? And I think the answer is pretty clear. I respect the experts. I respect our police department. But just like the military, civilian oversight of law enforcement is appropriate. It's healthy, and it is necessary. And so we are doing our jobs here. And I know that there's been a lot of press and print about the police commission and whether or not we're taking their work seriously. And I own, as I said in the newspaper today, that I think collectively there are a lot of cooks in the kitchen, so to speak, and that I understand the frustrating feeling, the feeling of frustration that the commission has about their work not getting to us in an orderly way, in a timely way, so that we can vote up or down, and help and make sure that your voice is not just heard, but it is respected, whether we agree with everything you recommend or not. The past is the past. Today is a new day. And we're going to change, and we're going to turn around that frustration in real time, and tonight is the beginning. So what is it that I suggest? First of all, the Police Review Commission put forward a recommendation that says a peace officer that adopts a higher use of force. And I think they were pretty clear. And I know the ACLU and others have talked about whether or not we're in compliance with 392, and maybe we'll deal with that at a different time. But the question raised by the police commission is not whether we're in compliance with 392, but whether we should adopt a higher standard. And they suggest that the higher standard should be that a peace officer is justified in using deadly force upon another person only as a last resort, and that's the key term, and when reasonable alternatives have been exhausted or are not feasible, and the officer reasonably believes, based on the totality of the circumstances, that such force is necessary. Now, the police department and the city, let's just say, the city family, has some concerns with last resort, especially if it is not defined. For they fear, and I'm summarizing here for everyone, and everyone will have a chance to weigh in if they choose, or certainly upon questioning from the councilmembers, they feared that last resort would mean that an officer would have to, if confronted with a deadly situation, a split-second decision, that they would have to, you know, spend sixty seconds going through a checklist before they could respond. And that's not the intent of what I put forward here. And I don't think it was the intent of the commission, as I looked at some of the public comments. It's not to address the split-second decision. It is instead to ask, as 392 does, in asking whether or not deadly force was necessary, are there other alternatives? Not in the split-second, but before the split-second, that avoids, maybe avoids, the confrontation that leads to deadly force in the first place. And so AB 392 has been heralded as the great reform bill. And I believe that it is a very important bill and a good bill. And I was proud to support it. And I know Dr. Weber, who is now the Secretary of State of California, worked hard to author it. The governor signed it, and it is the Stephon Clark Law. That's what it is called. And so 392 does a very important thing. It changes the standard from whether is deadly force justified. The old standard used to be, well, if a reasonable officer, given the circumstances, would have used deadly force, then it's okay. The standard was changed in necessary, which at least implies, to me, and I think it was the intent, that an officer at least has the duty to consider lesser, less than deadly force, other alternatives before using it. And so then the question is, what does necessary mean? Well, I think this is where 392 frankly falls a little bit short because it doesn't really define it in a way that was totally satisfying to me, and I think a lot of people. Because what it goes back to say is that necessary is actually defined by what's reasonable. So in some ways, it's circular. So as I was looking to try to thread the needle here and help us define what last resort means and to embrace the commission's recommendation, I couldn't find it in 392. But it turns out that there was a companion bill to 392. It was SB 230. And it was a bill that was supported by the law enforcement community. In fact, it was sponsored by the law enforcement community. And in my view, it did a clear job, a clear job of actually explaining what de-escalation might look like. And what it says is that peace officers should consider, that's key because I'm going to focus on that in another moment, peace officers should consider using tactics and techniques that may persuade the suspect to voluntarily comply or may mitigate the need to use a higher level of force to resolve the situation safely. Well, that's a pretty good definition, in my view, of last resort. The problem with it from my end, in terms of what I wrote, is that it's very permissive. It should, I should get the language exactly right. But it says "should consider", as opposed to "shall". So what I did was I put together a definition that said, says the following, you have it in front of you. Deadly force should only be used as a last resort. Mindy, if you can put it up, because there is one slight change here. I say last resort means that before deadly force is used, and that's what I added, before deadly force is used, because we're talking about deadly force, not just, not just any force. Peace officers shall use tactics and techniques that may persuade the suspect to voluntarily comply or may mitigate the need to use a higher level of force to resolve the situation safely. It takes the substance of 230 without using the exact word of 230. So here's where there are critics on both sides. I think you'll hear from some, from some of the activist community tonight. Well, tactics and techniques don't mean, you're not saying you have to exhaust all tactics and techniques. You're just saying tactics and techniques. Well, I read that in response. It doesn't say some tactics and techniques. It says tactics and techniques. You've got to use everything that you've been trained to do, if it's not a split-second decision, to avoid the use of deadly force. I think it's very strong. But the law enforcement community has a very different concern, because I deliberately and transparently, not hiding anything, I did not use the 230 language that said officers should consider. I said, before deadly force is used, peace officers shall, shall, use tactics and techniques. So I made it stronger. I made it stronger. And I think there's a balance here, always a balance. We're trying to save lives, both the community members' lives, and there have been too many shootings. But we're also trying to protect the lives of officers as well. And so I'm very clear in my memo that this language is not intended to change what should occur in a split second. But I do want us to require officers to use their training and purposely de-escalate, if at all possible. As I say in my memo, the motion is more than a convenient cut and paste to seek the middle ground. The 230 language with the "shall" provides a good, solid definition of last resort, and 392 does not. I think we can come to a reasonable consensus, even if, you know, it's an old joke in the legislature, but, you know, the definition of a good compromise is if everybody is a little bit unhappy. I don't know that that's what I seek here. I want everyone to be happy. I believe that this is going to require our police department to update its training. I believe that this is, that this is a significant change. But it also uses the substance of a law, a California law, that's already on the books. And so I commend this to you. And I do not invite anybody, though every member is welcome to whatever they want. But I do not invite you to try to wordsmith this, because if we do that, I'm not sure we're going to get there, and we're going to leave a lot of people in our community on all sides very frustrated. Thank you for allowing me to make that presentation. I turn it over. How many witnesses, how many people do we have, Madam Clerk?
I have eighteen people signed up to speak.
Okay, here's the way I'd like to do this. I'd like to hear first from Ms. Sequita Thompson, Stephon Clark's grandmother, who asked for the courtesy and the respect to be able to go first tonight. And thank you, Councilmember Vang, for making that request, and I think that is appropriate. Then, secondly, I would like to-
Mayor, it's actually Stephon Clark's mom, Mama Clark, that is calling in.
I'm sorry, who's calling in?
Stephon Clark's mother.
Oh, it's her mom. I thought it was grandma. I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
But Grandma might be calling in as well, so we'll see.
Okay, who are we taking first, Councilmember Vang? The mom, Sequit?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so we'll take mom first, and then, secondly-
And Mama Clark is not answering her phone, so we have not been able to contact her. So I'd recommend she dials into the queue or-
Okay, Councilmember Vang, we're trying, but we may not be able to succeed here with this request. Because, why don't we keep trying while I speak slowly and then say the rest of it? Which is that, second, I would like to take Chair Guerrero, the chair of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, to speak to the proposal that I have put forward, and the commission's work, of course. And then we will take the remaining people in the queue, and then we will bring it to the city council.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to-
This is Mario. Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. I'd like to share my screen, if possible. I'm going to try it, and you can tell me. So I just wanted to make sure, I think I owe it to the commission to, you know, share both the commission's recommendation and the proposal that the mayor has put forward. You know, first, I really have to just say that the council has, you know, both language versions before you. I cannot speak on behalf of the commission on the new proposal language before us. I can only give you my individual thoughts. And I also want to take the opportunity to let commissioners know that we are also bound by the Brown Act, so I couldn't communicate with more than five of you. So know that that is, you know, a limitation in some ways, and there's a reason for that as to why I was unable to communicate with all of you. So if you feel left out, know that, you know, that's part of the frustration of the process.
Again?
I do think that the language reflects a strong step in the right direction. I think the language does a couple of important things. It provides an explicit definition of deadly force, of the deadly force last resort standard, It provides an explicit definition of deadly force, of the deadly force last resort standard, which is higher, and is something that I believe we're all now starting to rally around. The second is it ties the standard to a requirement to de-escalate. And third, and it may be a minor thing, but it's part of a separate recommendation from the commission, the language uses peace officer as opposed to police officer. So there's a lot of good things about it. The words tactics and techniques in the mayor's proposal are plural in the language that's being, you know, that is before you, which to me means that officers must use any available tactics and techniques that are available to them at the time of a particular incident, and that these tactics and techniques will certainly vary by situation. So my reading of the language, as described by the mayor, that it's plural, and that it means, you know, all available tactics and techniques, we're in agreement. Also, this is one definition, and while it's a super important definition, it really truly is, the policy, the use of force policy by SACPD is a 19-page document. I will say that whichever language the city adopts, the commission's or the mayor's proposal, SACPD will have to go back to make appropriate edits to the Use of Force General Order 580.2 to bring the policy in line with the deadly force last resort standard. For example, one of the changes that I believe will need to be done is to ensure that the de-escalation section states that based on the new last resort standard, officers must use all tactics and techniques available to a peace officer at the time of the incident, which again mirrors what I believe the mayor just said. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to share my perspective, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council members may have.
So knowing that you can't speak for the, that you can't speak for the entire commission for the reasons you stated earlier, Mr. Guerrero, you believe, is it fair to say that what I've put forward here in terms of resolution, you believe meets the strong intent of the last resort concept that you and the commission put forward?
As you and I have interpreted, absolutely. And I want to acknowledge that people can read different things into it, and that I'm not an attorney. But as you and I have interpreted, I believe that it does.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't you stay on the line, Mario, and we'll take the public testimony, the remaining, what, 17 or 18 people, and then we may need you, council members may have questions of you as we debate this.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, are you ready for our callers?
Yes, please.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
I am Susan Rosenberg, commenting as a resident of District 4 and as a member of the Local Policy and Advocacy Committee of the National Council of Jewish Women, Sacramento. We strongly urge the council to adopt the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission's recommendation on the use of deadly force as a last resort. There are precedents for adoption of similar measures in San Francisco and Camden County, New Jersey, followed by the entire state of New Jersey. The Attorney General of Delaware has publicly stated her intention to adopt a similar policy. In the five years since Camden adopted the last resort standard, murder rates have dropped by 50% and use of force incidents were reduced by more than 90%. We concur with the memorandum from the mayor on the deadly use of force recommendation, which effectively answers the concerns raised by the police department in the staff report. We agree with the April 15 Sacramento B editorial titled Sacramento Leaders Promised to Listen to the Police Commission, Then They Ignored It Again. It acknowledges the steps the city has taken towards policing reform, but emphasizes, quote, "The city must finally do right by the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission." A first step in this direction should be to adopt the commission's use of force recommendation. Next should be a full public review and response to all of the commission's recommendations. The commission and the community have waited too long. Please act now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Daisy Beaman. I have been informed by the League of Women Voters, Sacramento County, that the city is not in compliance with AB 392. The community knows this law as the Stefan Clark Law and the California Act to Save Lives. The mandated law intent is to save lives, crucial needed in the Black and Latinx communities. The Sacramento County Sheriff has incorporated AB 392 verbatim into its use of force policy. We are grateful. I ask you to adopt the resolution as follows. AB 392 verbatim as the use of force, deadly force policy. It removes confusion for police officers and provide greater public safety and accountability. The higher use of force standard recommended provides transparency, accountability, and builds greater trust between the community and the police. Using the entire AB 392 language verbatim is needed to make the higher use of force language effective. Thank you so much for what you're doing and for having this conversation. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Dr. Karine MacIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist and a resident of District 7. I strongly support the Police Review Commission's recommendation that SACPD adopt a higher use of force standard to make it absolutely clear that deadly force should not, should only be used as a last resort. It's unacceptable that today in Sacramento, police officers can legally kill someone even when they don't have to. Stefan Clark, Daryl Richards, Dejean Flannot, these are just a few of the individuals that have been murdered by SACPD. Individuals who were in crisis and needed help, and instead they got bullets. Individuals whose murder required the city to pay out millions of dollars in wrongful death settlements. Individuals whose life, dignity, and liberty were not prioritized by police officers. Research shows that officers at agencies with stricter use of force policies kill fewer people and are less likely to be killed or seriously injured themselves. How it stands now, SACPD can use deadly force regardless of whether it was necessary to prevent death or serious bodily injury. They shoot first and ask questions later. They can kill even when alternatives to deadly force, like issuing a verbal warning, repositioning and calling for backup, or using lower levels of force are available, safe, and feasible. Now, I understand there would be a significant cost to comply with this change. We all know that SACPD has the budget for it. Howard Chan's proposing to increase the police budget to over $165 million. I don't believe we need any new sworn officers or replacement vehicles. I don't believe we need to be giving 3.5% raises to officers. I believe we need to have less police, and I believe the existing police need to undergo a culture shift, where they choose to use informed and educated judgment to find and choose the least intrusive alternative to deadly use of force. Every day that goes by without addressing Sacramento's epidemic of police violence is another day that a police officer may violently take another life. I urge you to vote in support of the Police Review Commission's recommendation regarding the use of force policy, and I also implore you to direct the city manager to implement this direction on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. Thank you for having me speak. In 2017, I asked Norm Stamper, author of To Protect and Serve: How to Fix America's Police, which traffic stops do not improve motor safety. He said it depends on when and why a specific violation is enforced, and what is needed is a research-driven, evidence-based policy that would help shape enforcement priorities, not the policing-for-profit motive that is all too common today. Retired LAPD Lieutenant Raymond Foster, whom I spoke with last week, said he has never agreed with traffic stops made for reasonable suspicion. New York Attorney General Letitia James said the vast majority of traffic stops do not involve criminal conduct, yet the involvement of police in such situations can result in violent interactions with the New York Police Department. James recommended in September of 2020, that police should cease conducting traffic stops following her investigation into the shooting death of Allen Fleas in October 2019. According to State Ripa data, Sacramento PD reported about 95,000 traffic stops in 2019, and over 24,000 traffic stops were conducted for reasons unrelated to traffic violations. 16,000 traffic stops were made for equipment violations, like expired registrations, the one that got Dante Wright murdered. This is 42% of stops that have nothing to do with traffic safety. This practice needs to be eliminated, but to reduce frequencies of interactions with police, and therefore the number of opportunities for use of force to even occur. This also would reduce costs on labor and depreciation of vehicles. The officers do not deserve, let alone need a raise during COVID. Most importantly, this could help begin to repair the broken trust between SACPD and the community they have sworn to protect. Like Councilmember Guerrero said about the homelessness problem, this requires a holistic approach to police reform if there is to be significant change. Thank you. My name is Robert J. Hanson. You can contact me at 916-6. I can't even tell you my number. You can contact me on social media. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Kristin Jacobs, and I'm a resident of District 6. I just wanted to say that everything that Dr. Sacco said, I wholeheartedly agree, and I would also like to say that the city council needs to adopt the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission's Use of Force recommendation today, and that deadly force should never be used, and that this use of force as a last resort recommendation is a bare minimum that we need to keep our community safe, but it's a good first step. So I fully support you going ahead with it, and it's your job as city council to represent the will of the voters and the people of Sacramento, and make sure that this passes and that we continue on to make sure that Sacramento is actually safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hello, I am Gary Ray Gray from District 7. I'm calling to express support for the addition of last support to the SPD use of force policy. I fully expect if the policy is adopted, there will be extensive discussion as to the actual text of the policy. Related to that discussion, I highly suggest the city review the verbiage used by New Jersey, which has been a very successful police reform implementation. New Jersey's use of force policy consists of seven core principles, two of which are specific to last resort standards. Core value number four specifies, specifically relates to deadly force situations. What is core value two uses force as a last resort, as a foundation for de-escalation techniques. This tells me that New Jersey understands that use of force decisions by an officer are made at the very beginning of a police citizen encounter. Force can be communicated via verbal language, body language, and overall attitude of the officer. Is there respect? Is there arrogance? Is there over-control? These are the communication elements and qualities that impact the power dynamic of the encounter. I encourage Sacramento to recognize that use of force policy and training needs to address the initial moments of any encounter, and I believe my position supports the mayor's proposal. The opening moments of an encounter are a critical predictor of whether lethal force will develop. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi. First, I'd like to say that I do fully support the last resort language for the use of force policy and its original intent, not Steinberg's version. I also want to say that really at this point, I think accountability is really going to be important. It's not, it's nothing if we just make a policy, but we don't actually do anything about it. We've seen that happen over and over again, where SACPD makes these new policies and then immediately violates them. So we have to have some sort of accountability for how these policies, like what's going to happen to you if you violate this policy? We need that to be written out, perhaps in a matrix form, where if you do this, this happens to you, so that there's actually some accountability behind what the police are doing. So that's why earlier Steinberg said that he didn't know, or some people might not know why this issue is with the council. It's because of accountability. We pay the salaries for the police. They were supposed to work for us and be our public servants, yet there's no, like, opportunity for us to have input. The commission was created, and it's not been taken seriously. None of the recommendations have been taken or listened to at all. He said it's a new day, and that's going to change, but I don't see that changing right now, so I want to see some action behind that. And, you know, I don't want to see the police in Sacramento literally allowed to get away with murder anymore. Like, we need, we need some accountability behind that. That's the reason why this is at the council. That's why so many people called in tonight. But again, I really support the use of force language, and I support the commission, and I want them to have more, more power and be taken more seriously by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Flojan Koffer, and I'm a resident of District 6. And I am calling in because I want to support the recommendations from the commission this evening as written. While I recognize that there is a counterproposal, I am deeply uncomfortable with the fact that the commission that has been tasked with doing the research and working on this for many months to years has not been included fully in the review and recommendation of this new policy. In fact, this commission is meeting next Monday, May 10, and so my recommendation to the body would be to delay the vote on this until after the entire body of people who have volunteered their time to work on this proposal are able to weigh in on the counterproposal. I'd also just like to, as a note on process and efficiency, note that it is really unhelpful to get counterproposals 24 hours in advance, because it does not allow everybody to have time to be able to dive into them and really truly understand within them and compare them, and it also systematically disallows people who are on other commissions from being able to weigh in as a body. And so I think when these, when these recommendations are coming from people who volunteered their time, they should be respected as such, and therefore they should be allowed to weigh in. They don't have official capacity and endowed powers to be able to make policy, but they should be consulted to the highest level possible, and I don't think that's happened this time. And so the new proposal is substantively different, and given that the totality of the commission has not been able to weigh in on it, I would like to hear as a member of the community what this commission has to say about it, and if they totally agree with all of these, and I think taking a pause to do that is warranted. Thank you so much, and I strongly urge that you postpone the vote on this until the entire commission can weigh in. Thank you.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Enzo. I live in District 4. I'm calling in support of implementing the recommendations as made by the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. Lethal force as a last resort is a bare minimum. This won't be a silver bullet for ending police violence, but it is a noble step in the right direction. Failing to pass this would be a moral failure on the behalf of the council. Three years of inaction tonight. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you. My name is Daniel Bishop. I'm a resident of District 7. We don't know how many civilians are killed by police every year in this country. We don't know because there are requirements to collect and publish that data to give you, like, just an introduction about the juggle lack of accountability we already have. But even the information we do have shows that police in the United States kill civilians at a wildly higher rate than in any other first-world country. Are you guys happy with that ranking on the face of it? You know, I watched as much of the Derek Chauvin trial as I could last month, and amongst the horror and brutality, one of the things the prosecutors said stuck with me as being pertinent here. There is a difference between a risk and a threat. Police officers may not use deadly force- Police officers may not use deadly force when confronted with a risk because we know that police officers interpret anything as a risk to justify horrific behavior, and we know that racial bias means police interpret risk differently. You know, over the past two years, I've seen police in and around Sacramento shoot and kill unarmed civilians, mount sidewalks to ram miners with SUVs, haze and drag paraplegic individuals, threaten them with dogs, use rubber bullets in ways that the international community agrees are deadly. This is not an acceptable way to run a police force. It never was. You know, there needs to be only deadly force in the face of a not risk, and there needs to be accountability and consequences for abuse because we know that, we know that systems without accountability attract awful people. Like that's the bare minimum. You guys should be, you know, implement a civilized police force. We don't have to, we just need to adopt policies and practices used by successful communities. You know, it's not about tweaking a word here and there. Just look outside your bubble and see what's working in other places. Look outside of the United States, you know? I've given you the numbers. It's ridiculous. Like look outside of where you are right now and see what's working.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. Patricia Sturdiven, resident of District Four and Chair of the Policy Advocacy Committee, National Council of Jewish Women Sacramento. We urge the council to adopt the recommendation that lethal force be permissible only as a last resort. After Camden, New Jersey adopted the last resort standard five years ago, it went from being the murder capital of the country to seeing a 50% reduction in murder rates and a more than 90% reduction in use of force incidents. Adopting that standard would not only enhance public safety and save lives, but would be fiscally prudent. Then Councilmember Allen Warren participated in a webinar for NCJW last August entitled "Re-envisioning Public Safety and Policing in Sacramento" with Assemblymember Kevin McCarty and Mario Guerrero, Chair of the Commission. Mr. Warren said then that the city had paid out more than $25 million in settlement of police abuse cases. We agree with Mr. McCarty that taxpayer funds could be better used to benefit the community through known crime prevention programs, including expanded recreational services, youth and adult job skills training, and mental health support. Please act now to adopt the progressive public safety reform contained in this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is PJ Hehimm. I support the commission's recommendation to utilize deadly force as a last resort, not a quote-unquote last resort, but an actual last resort, when all other methods of restraint have been attempted and failed. Anything less is an attempt at gaslighting citizens of Sacramento into believing that the police have been restrained in some manner when they haven't. Last resort means last. It means after every other manner of restraint or stopping someone has been tried and failed, I'm not here for neoliberal fake progressive redefining of terms which have pretty straightforward definitions. Per Google, last resort, a final course of action used only when all else has failed. Not when all else has been contemplated and ruled out, no, only when all else has been tried and has failed. Anything less than that is giving police enough of a space to pry open the ability to kill people. Sorry, but I've seen enough videos to not trust their intentions. I've seen enough videos of them lying to not trust their ethics. I've seen enough videos of them planting evidence to not trust their adherence to the law. Police will just lie about the reasoning for their use of force because they want to hide their own misdeeds. There is no reason why any police officer, given the choice to lie or lose their job, would choose to lose their job. Sorry, that is just the way it is with human beings who need jobs to survive. They are biased. When it comes to human life, the highest of standards should apply before it is even contemplated to murder someone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Samantha Kramer and I'm calling today in affiliation with Decarcerate Sacramento to express my support for a vociferous yes vote on item 34 to update the Use of Force standard for our peace officers based on the findings and recommendations of the Police Review Commission. My educational background is in public health sciences from UC Davis. The data reflects that over 50% of people in Sacramento County Jail have been diagnosed with mental illness and are not receiving treatment. This must be included in review and reconsideration of police use of force. By investing in today's efforts for oversight and review and subsequently in robust community healthcare services that offer folks a higher quality of life, we can create methods of early intervention before that downward spiral that results in law enforcement interventions and eventually incarceration. Cities spend millions of dollars in public funds to settle police misconduct litigation every single year, so why is it so difficult for us to hold police accountable? The Thurgood Marshall Institute has established the national police funding database where these data are available to you and to me and the public. We remember Stephon Clark. We remember Daryl Richards. As another example, this council will recall that in 2017 Sacramento police brutally beat John Hernandez nearly to death. I'm reading from the Sacramento Bee Now. The Sacramento City Council on Tuesday approved a $5.2 million payout for an excessive force lawsuit of a 2017 incident in which police tased a 34-year-old man so many times, his family said he was left with the mental capability of a toddler. This settlement is believed to be the largest in the city's history, far surpassing last year's settlement, that would be 2016, of $2.8 million, four of which doesn't matter.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Bear with me, please, I beg you. If this city truly cares about police forces, then please.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Greetings, Sacramento City Council. My name is Keon Bliss and I'm Commissioner for District Four of Sacramento Police Review Commission. And like many other callers before you, I am calling for the city council to adopt this commission's recommendations as is and because it's really fundamentally important that whatever the language that is stated on here, that our intention in making this is to make sure that deadly force should only be used as a last resort when all reasonable alternatives have been exhausted. And unfortunately, while I appreciate Chair Guerrero and the mayor's efforts to find compromised language, I have deep concerns that this is undermining this, the commission's recommendations and could create a deadly loophole that will only be discovered and reconciled once another Stephon Clark incident happens. My greatest fear and concern is this. And I want to really raise the point too, from the documents that were put in here, that, I mean, the city's position is actually pretty strong that it has full authority to implement this Use of Force policy recommendation without having to bargain with Sacramento's Peace Officers Association and SACPD as a whole. In fact, while the city attorney like mentioned a little-known case from 1994, Scott versus Heinrich, to support the Spoa's position, it failed to mention a more recent court case from 2016, the San Francisco Peace Officers Association versus SF Police Commission, which concerns this very, like this same Use of Force policy recommendation that you are considering tonight and was upheld in court twice, that the city had full authority to implement this policy without having to go through arbitration.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I find it, I'm really concerned that the city council is making this decision on short notice as it's been raised as well as.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Norman Nelson. I am Chair of the Sacramento County League of Women Voters Criminal Justice Committee. We have been working specifically on examining the policing policies with the city of Sacramento since August of 2019. The Use of Deadly Force State Law is AB 392, the Act to Save Lives and the Stephon Clark Law. AB 392 was required to be implemented by January 2020 and SB 30 dubbed as a Training Bill and Companion Bill was required to be implemented by January 2021. In 2020, the state attorney general issued two bulletins reiterating the fact that local agencies are required to comply with this state law, AB 392. In April of 2020, the California Judicial Council also issued jury instructions that cited AB 392 verbatim. AB 392 is the foundation of which higher use of force can be adopted. To this end, today we are asking that you adopt a Use of Force policy resolution directing the city manager and the city attorney to implement AB 392 language verbatim as the city's Use of Deadly Force policy, as well as the last resort standard as recommended by the Sacramento Police Review Commission. We are pleased that the Sacramento County Sheriff has adopted AB 392 language verbatim as a part of its Use of Force policy. Why must the city of Sacramento wait until another loss of life for misconduct accountability if a cell phone is perceived as a gun? In June of 2020, through a city council resolution on Use of Force policy, you directed staff to comply with all state laws concerning Use of Force. In partnership with the ACLU of Northern California, we have provided new documentation of how the city is not in compliance with AB 392, which of course, one of the main areas is the liberal use of the word perceived, among other things. Yet we still do not have.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yet we do not have AB 392 adopted verbatim for the city of Sacramento and we ask that you do so.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Oh yeah, absolutely. My name is Nikki. In terms of the review commission, the past is not just the past, Daryl. It's 500 pages plus of recommendations that y'all have ignored. And while we pat each other on the back for complying or barely superseding with state law, I want to highlight the absurdity, the absurdity that after years, we're still asking at this point in our history to beg to legislate killing our brothers and sisters and siblings only as a last resort from our overarmed, obsessively unrepentant police force. Despite your embarrassing national media propagandistry, people on the ground in Sacramento who interact in our police daily by your officers know another story. Asking them, asking these cops to kill as a last resort somewhat exposes that they have long been killing to control rather than engaging in any other way to de-escalate. We only have to look at how this council gave awards instead of a termination letter to the officers that facilitated the hunting and killing of Dejean Sloneau, even the one who told a neighbor that he was just a tweaker and they should hit him with a baseball bat to have him chill out. This officer got this award for valiant policing or whatever the fuck. SACPD has a long history of racist violence to repair. Ask the family of Donald Venerable, killed over 20 years ago by SACPD. Asking these officers to think of any other options besides killing members of our community at this point is a tragic moment of potential quote victory after all this time and actually only as useful as it is enforceable. And after someone has been killed, it's too late for justice. We need these violent cops disentangled from our communities to actually and effectively reduce police violence against communities of color and poor communities. That means not waiting to see if this new rule helps. How many lives will we have to sacrifice to find out?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
How many lives will?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening. My name is Margot Ronaldo and I'm commenting as the co-chair of the Sacramento Democratic Socialists of America and a resident of District Six. Sacramento DSA supports the adoption of the higher use of force language for police officers as written by the Police Review Commission. We also recognize however that in order for this to prove impactful, the council should be prepared to adopt the necessary budgetary changes that are required in order to make this effective. That means funding mental health services and prioritizing the continued work of those organizations who are actually trained to lend professional support in addressing these issues in the Sacramento area, not police officers. Changing the Use of Force standards is the bare minimum, and community members understand there is much more that can be done to diminish lethal Use of Force incidents. We strongly urge the council to immediately consider supporting the rest of the commission's recommendations, such as ending qualified immunity for police officers and supporting the establishment of an officer decertification process as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carol Gonzalez and I live in City Councilmember Valenzola District. I'm a proud member of the Latinx Young Democrats and the Policy Director of the Sacramento County Young Democrats. These organizations are calling to express support to update the Use of Force based on the findings and recommendations of the Police Review Commission. There's definitely a lot that could be done, including the vast other recommendations brought by the Police Review Commission. Deadly force as a last resort is necessary and there's some place to save lives. This shouldn't be a difficult conversation, especially after brutal murders in our own community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you so much for having me and thank you so much for the space and time. I'd like to speak directly to the council first for just a moment. The question of long-term housing, it was kind of brought up earlier on item 38, but is there such a thing as personal property on stolen land? As an indigenous person, I'd like to say, let's ask the Sutter statue. Sutter was the colonizer, was a colonizer, a pedo, and was one of the first to be considered a Catholic missionary, a sort of colonizer that considered a mission a home with all of his slave kids. Look at how the property gods now have a hospital chain. Wow, let's talk about the benefits of land back in the movement. So did you know that you could save trillions of taxpayers on your land if you give it back to local indigenous people? So when you give your land back, it's returned to its rightful indigenous Yucuta and Mewoc owner, especially here in Sacramento, the tenders of the original God-giving land. Why do business owners, AKA modern-day colonizers, slave drivers, and landowners and business owners not know what to do with the unhoused? Well, I can answer that. Did you know, Jesus Christ, did you know that Jesus Christ in the Bible actually fucking loved homeless people? He was born in a goddamn barn. His best friend was a prostitute. And gentrifiers hate dirty, ugly, and they cannot wait until the Biden wet dream comes true to forget the rape and slaughter and stealing of all the colonizers, like, and stealing of land by all the colonizers and just to be happy until everyone is experiencing joy until the county march. Thank you so much, Mindy. I'm fucking leaving and thank you, Blair. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hey there, this is Emmeline Mathis, District Four resident and VP of Membership for the Sacramento County Young Democrats, which is an organization in the county that has over 150 young activists who are really engaged on this issue. I'm calling in support of the adoption of the Police Commission's recommendations as written. As somebody who worked on AB 932, this conversation is really pressing for me and I want to remind the council that these compromises that are being mentioned tonight is a matter of life and death and is not something to be taken lightly. It's disappointing as a member of this city that this is the adaptation that my city is taking and I'm disappointed that it took a murder of our community member in almost four years to have this conversation. So again, I'm in support of adopting the council, sorry, commission's recommendations in full and calling as a representative of Sacramento County Young Democrats. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Katie Maple, and I'm a resident of District 5. I'm calling today as a member of the community. We definitely change the law enforcement practices across the nation. Many cities have faced reckonings in recent years regarding law enforcement use of force, Sacramento included. I think of Stephon Clark. I think of Joseph Mann, and fortunately, many more. We have an opportunity to make real change and to lead the nation on this front if we decide to limit use of force as only a last resort. People's lives are not expendable just because an officer experienced fear, especially when so many residents of color experience fear around law enforcement with no redress. We can begin to change this by not only implementing this specific recommendation, but also all of the recommendations by our Police Review Commission. These include keeping and making available data on use of force and diversifying our police force. I also agree with Dr. Kofir that the counterproposal should be reviewed and discussed with the entire commission before a decision is made at council. For that reason, I would also urge that this item be postponed and voted on a date in the very near future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Joe Cardillo. I'm a resident of District 4. As have many residents of our city, I've spent considerable time watching, reviewing, and better understanding over the last year how Black, Latinx, Hispanic, and Indigenous members of our community are consistently subjected to higher levels of force than I, as a white man, receive when interacting with law enforcement. This is a pattern. It's a practice, and there's data behind it. I think the important thing that I want to emphasize is that the Police Commission, Review Commission, has made a recommendation. It's a specific recommendation. I'm in full support of it. And last but not least, I really think that we are clearly in a time where it's not enough to sign on to policies and investigations and commissions that don't really change the rules in a way that changes outcomes. We don't need moments of empathy. We need consistent follow-through and action, and I think this is an opportunity for the council to, in an honest and serious way, take the bare minimum of action to follow through and take care of that, and really honor the dignity and the importance of every single member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, good evening. Richard Wake, City Council, District 5. I've heard the word accountability mentioned several times tonight, and I couldn't agree more with that term. It's been used to describe several different issues, things regarding accountability. But, you know, we can have all the resolutions and stuff passed in the world, but accountability also means electing elected officials that are going to elect people, like district attorneys, that are going to prosecute bad cops. You know, back in 2018, eight members of the Sacramento City Council and several other Democrats in Sacramento County endorsed Ann Marie Schubert for reelection to district attorney despite the fact she failed to prosecute bad police officers from the state of California that failed to prosecute Nazis that stabbed people at the Capitol despite overwhelming phone-recorded evidence. And yet, Mayor Steinberg and seven other city council members endorsed this incompetent district attorney. The problem is also the big money that goes into political campaigns. But the problem is, also, the main problem is, is we need to quit electing elected officials that are going to be endorsing people like Ann Marie Schubert, who also endorses Scott Jones, or endorse Scott Jones for sheriff, by the way, who's one of the biggest Nazis on the face of the planet. And, you know, the thing is, you know, if I got one thing, if I can accomplish one thing in the 2022 elections, I'm going to be working against every individual that's running for higher office to make sure that those two individuals in the city council that are running for state senate do not get endorsed by any Democratic club or any Democratic organization. Steve Hansen and Eric Garrett were rightfully kicked off
Thank you for your comments.
the Sacramento County Democratic Central Committee
Thank you for your comments. Your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, we need to quit electing officials that endorse terrible district attorneys like Ann Marie Schubert.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Sonia Lewis, and I am calling because I am extremely concerned about this very last-minute and after-the-fact action of the city council to take into consideration recommendations from the commission that have been three years in the making. It is preposterous to know that we have people who are giving their free time. They are volunteering on behalf of citizens in this city, and their recommendations are put on hold and turned off. I agree with Dr. Kofir in regards to postponing the vote for this initiative, this change, until the counterproposal is actually reviewed. When we speak of last resort, I want to say that this department, this city council, has been given the opportunity multiple times to enact new laws, procedures, bring them up to date many times over the years. I think of Joseph Mann. I think of what came out of Joseph Mann's death in regards to body cams and cultural competency training, which, in reality, did not 100% get completed by all officers in the Sacramento Police Department, and I think that we should get a return on our money instead of Howard Chan showing up at meetings requesting more money for a department that is not doing the job of stopping crime. And so I just would like to also lift up the names of Daryl Richards and Stephon Clark and Nandi Kane and Dejean Flannot and Donald Venerable and Brendan Smith and Zatira Abrahams and Patricia Hill, all of whom have either been murdered or abused by the Sacramento Police Department over the last six years. And so I, because I am a Black woman who lives in this country and knows that I have a target on my back because Black women are at the bottom of the totem pole, I wanted to lift up the name of Darnella Frazier because when it is not courageous individuals in community who take video of people who are being killed by the police, they end up dead, just like Daryl Richards in the middle of the night. I can remember in Bill Paxton.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, we need to address consequences for murder. Qualified immunity needs to end, and the Police Bill of Rights needs to be over.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And Mr. Mayor, this is the last caller. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Ms. Clark, please turn down the device that you're watching the meeting on. Ms. Clark?
Yes, we need to address consequences for murder. Qualified immunity needs to end, and the Police Bill of Rights needs to be over.
Ms. Clark, it's your turn to address the council.
And Mr. Mayor, this is the last caller.
Ms. Clark, it's your turn to address the council. Please turn down the device that you're watching the meeting.
Hello. I am Saquett Clark, the mother of Stephon Alonso Clark and the CEO of IronSat Foundation. This is my public statement and comment to Sacramento City Council, Mayor and Manager. I have been informed that the city is not in compliance with AB 392, commonly referred to as the Stephon Clark Law and the California Act to Save Lives. I ask you to adopt the resolution as follows. Number one, AB 392 verbatim as the use of deadly force policy. It removes confusion for police officers and provides greater public safety and accountability. Number two, the higher use of force standard recommended by the Police Commission provides transparency, accountability, and bridges the gap between law enforcement and at-risk, underserved, underrepresented communities. Using the entire AB 392 language verbatim is needed to make the higher use of force language effective. I ask to speak with you all because I understand now that when politicians, lawmakers of society generally refer to AB 392, the Stephon Clark Law, as if it had brought justice to the unnecessary murder of my son. May I remind you, Stephon Alonso Clark was 22 years young, a baby, as well as a father of two, and he was murdered by Sacramento police officers in his grandmother's backyard while only holding a cell phone. Those officers are still employed with the Sacramento Police Department, and one still patrols our community. It's ironic that AB 392, the Stephon Clark Law, California's Act to Save Lives, will never save Stephon's life. He'll always be dead. I'll never see him again. I am Stephon Alonso Clark, and I am Sacramento. We want and deserve AB 392, the Stephon Clark Law and California's Act to Save Lives be implemented verbatim into Sacramento's policies and legislation. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
All right. Thank you. Is that, that's the public testimony? Thank you very much for everyone weighing in. As you can see, there are strongly held feelings, and I know that there are strongly held feelings on all sides here. And we are trying to move forward a progressive policy that is based upon the law and based upon the fundamental concept that the Police Commission put forward, which is last resort. So let me hear from colleagues here. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela first.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody who called in, especially the Stephon Clark's mother. I appreciate your informative advocacy, powerful testimony tonight. I want to share some of the disbelief when I came into office and had been researching the commission recommendations from before I was sworn in, that we still don't have a policy that says deadly force should be a last resort. To me, this just feels really obvious. Like, of course, you wouldn't want to fatally injure somebody. And, you know, I know a lot of folks have talked about San Francisco and their policy around last resort. They have litigated with their police union over whether this is a bargaining issue. The courts have very clearly said it is not. You also have our Attorney General Javier Becerra, before he left us in 2020, who said that he believes all departments should adopt a policy of last resort for lethal force. And then you have international law, which really clearly says that in all cases, police officers should be using deadly force as a last resort. So that part of this is super clear to me. And I had some quotes from Dr. Weber that I was going to read that feel repetitive now after the public testimony. But I will say, send my appreciation to her, Annise Moon and McCarthy, who were authors of AB 392, for tweeting their support of this proposal and their reiteration that 392 was always meant to be a floor and not a ceiling. The whole point was to set a higher, lower bar, but that, it doesn't mean that jurisdictions can go beyond as San Francisco and others have done. I want to start first with a question for the city manager before I finish my comments here because I know there's been a lot of conversation about when the rest of the commission recommendations are going to come back to council for potential action. And I'm really hoping that that is before June 1st or on June 1st. So I'm wondering if you could give us a status update on either some or all of those recommendations and what the timeline is if you could expect those to come back to council, including some of the points around 392 and others that were made by commissioners today.
Absolutely. Councilmember Valenzuela, we are prepared, in conjunction with OPSA, Office of Public Safety Accountability, and the Auditor's Office, along with the Attorney's Office, to bring the full set of recommendations back by June 1st or sooner and to show them the recommendations in totality and also those that we've already implemented, then showing in different categories which ones we will continue to need to implement and evaluate with this council and provide a schedule accordingly. So, yeah, June 1st is a doable date.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Howard. So, within a couple of weeks, basically, is when we're going to be looking at this again. And I do hear folks who are saying the commission's meeting on Monday. Can they talk about this on Monday? Can they bring something back to the council for review? And I'm going a little off script here because, and at first, I want to make people clear. I think the mayor's memo and the step we're proposing to take tonight is a really big deal, mostly because the city of Sacramento still hasn't said that we believe lethal force should be a last resort, and that is really important for us to say. And I want to say that soon because I want to start setting the expectations soon, and I want to start getting the wheels moving as I know they are slow on the training and the work that we're going to need to do to get that implemented as department policy. But I do also hear folks who are saying that they want a chance to look at this, and they want a chance to provide input. And that's the whole point for me with the commission is that this action today, I mean, it's not the end. This is just the beginning of our work with the commission, in my mind. This is the first action we're proposing to take on the commission's recommendations. It's not going to be the last. We have a meeting coming up in just a couple of weeks, but we're going to consider more. And so I really think that we should be considering the totality of these recommendations and continue to refine, and to continue to keep the door open to the commission to continue to refine because this is not a perfect science. And I know at some point, we're going to have to say done on the commission recommendations so that we can start implementing the use of force piece and updating the training and making that work. But I also don't want to lose the important momentum that has led us to this moment and all of the behind-the-scenes communication with the mayor, with my colleagues, with staff, with commissioners like mine who called in tonight to really try to get this ball rolling because it's long overdue, as everybody has said. So I do want to thank the mayor for his work on this item because he is taking us tonight farther than we've ever gone before. And I am really excited to be here for this, and I'm excited to say that I do want to move approval of this item. But I also want to just make it super clear to the commissioners that the door is not closed to you on this. And then I think it's important that if it's on Monday, you all identify potential changes. You want us to consider that that door is open when the next round of recommendations comes back to the council so that we can try to finalize this very soon, but also recognize the fact that that step needs to be taken as the chair outlining his comments at tonight's meeting. So with that, I would like to move to direct the city manager to amend the city's use of force policy as contained and the recommendations set forth by the mayor's memorandum and to implement this policy consistent with the council's recommendation after the June 1st next meeting. That is an improvisation, improvisation on this spot, I think is the word that I want to use. But I do just want to create one open door, one time that the commission can look at this before we say go, before we start implementing the training. And, yeah, just to hear my colleagues' thoughts and input on that. But thank you, Mayor, for the time, and I'm done. Yeah.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. Let us hear now from Councilmember Vang, then Councilmember Harris.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilwoman Katie Valenzuela, can I ask for clarification? Just what your motion was? Is it to adopt the mayor's proposal for the use of force? I just want to make sure I get clarity on that.
Yeah, it's for us to vote on adopting this and for the city manager to work on implementing after the June 1st meeting so we give the commission time to come back if there's further refinement that's needed based on their feedback and review.
Okay. Thanks for that. Yeah, I just wanted to get that clarity. I think I may have some disagreement on this in particular. So, but thank you for that motion. First, I just want to thank all the residents who called in today and really thank Mama Clark for calling in when I, you know, really believe she doesn't have to, right? And I want to remind everyone that AB 392, the Stephon Clark Law, was passed really to ensure that we don't lose another life in the city and in the state by the hand of law enforcement. I think the essence of our Police Commission proposed recommendation is that before a life is taken, every possible alternative to deadly force should be occurred so that we don't lose anyone, and it's definitely last resort. I think my understanding of last resort means it's last resort. And first, I just do want to thank the mayor, and I really appreciate your work to find common ground. But I just want to say, you know, I believe that our Sacramento Community Police Review Commission's language is still much stronger. I've had the opportunity to be in conversations with my commissioner on several occasions, really on this issue, and she has spent hours, along with all the other commissioners, to get to this point today. And what I'm worried about is that without using the word, and I don't want to word Smith, your counterproposal, Mayor, but what I'm worried about is that when we don't use the word awe or exhaustion, I'm incredibly concerned whether the true meaning of last resort will be implemented by law enforcement. As one of the callers mentioned that I heard today, this is truly a matter of life and death. And when we say last resort, we really mean last resort. And when we say last resort, we really mean last resort. I think Councilwoman Katie Valenzuela did mention, you know, that regarding the, the San Francisco policy and how it was upheld as well. I also had the opportunity to speak directly to our city manager, our city attorney, and was advised that, you know, what we're doing right now is truly a policy discussion and that it's not a bargaining issue. And I believe that the Commission has spoken, and they have provided us with their recommendation, and we should truly honor it. Again, it is exactly the same as San Francisco's policy, which has been upheld in court. And, you know, what I've also learned, that it has also reduced uses of deadly and officer injuries. The other comment I want to make, and I think I heard loudly from all the residents and folks that called in, is that I know tonight we are strictly just discussing about the use of force policy, but I also want to add that there's going to be a lot of changes that needs to be made in our local language. Even if we adopt the higher use of force standard, it's still critical to have AB 392, the Stephon Clark language, be verbatim in our local policy language. So I just want to emphasize that. I would, I was, I want to make a counter-motion to pass the recommendation as is from the Sacramento Police Commission, and so that would be my counter-motion on the table.
Okay. Not hearing a second? There's no second. The motion dies for lack of a second.
I'll second it, Mayor. Sorry. I thought, I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. So that is a substitute motion. That you're, Councilmember Valenzuela, you're the maker of the original motion and also the second on the counter, which is within the, within the parliamentary rules. Okay. We do have two motions now on the floor. Let me now move to Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to say that I appreciate your effort to find a compromise language that might fit the bill. You know, when, when I asked at the last council meeting for an analysis of the Police Review Commission recommendation, it's because this is pretty serious business. Everybody recognizes the gravity of loss of life, certainly of our community and also of our officers. And words make a big difference. You have proposed language and said that you don't want any wordsmithing. I, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I find some of the wording in your proposal to be something that I might not accept once I have an analysis of people who are more familiar with case law than myself. The fact of the matter is, I agree with Flojane Kofor, Dr. Kofor, who said that in deference to and in, you know, in honorance of the Police Review Commission, that we put this off and let them deliberate your counterproposal thoroughly and come back to the council. At the same time, I would require that our city attorney, our OPSA, Dr. Watson, and the police come back with their analysis of your proposed counter-language. You know, substituting the word "shall" for "should" is a big deal. The definition of last resort, I think, is still somewhat tenuous in your language. I am not necessarily averse to the adoption of a last resort standard when adequately defined, that can be supported by case law. And I don't think there's been anywhere near enough analysis of this for me to feel comfortable with it. I also heard many people raise the specter, including the League of Women Voters, and Jay and I actually attended a meeting with them, where they raised a specter of doubt about whether we are in compliance with AB 392, which I believe sets a very strong standard for use of force policy statewide that is backed up as statute by case law, which is very important, because in any issue where, where deadly force is used, it almost always leads to litigation. And words make a huge difference in terms of liabilities to the officers, to the city, and, and quite frankly, to the people who lose a loved one in terms of, you know, how they move through the legal process as well. It affects everybody deeply and profoundly, and I am not comfortable moving forward on this language tonight. So I would offer another counter-motion, and that is this, that we push this back to the Police Commission, Police Review Commission. Let them bring back their recommendation, be it their original or an altered one based upon your language. At the same time, I would ask the city attorney, our OPSA, and the police to give a thorough analysis of your counter-language and also an opinion, a written opinion, about whether or not we are in compliance with AB 392 and what would be the impediment to putting the entirety of three, AB 392, you know, in, in our policy. So that is my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you're not, your comment, you mean, not a motion. Oh.
No, that was a counter-motion.
So. Roberts rules here. I've, is there, is it appropriate to have a second substitute motion? Okay, there's a second substitute motion, which is to take it back to the Commission. Is there a second on that motion?
With the direction to, to council and to OPSA and to the police to give an analysis of your counter-language.
I will second that motion, Mayor.
Okay. That motion's been seconded. We will, and I'm going to speak to each of the motions in a moment, but I want to hear from all my colleagues. Mayor Protem Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Before my comments, can I just ask Councilmember Valenzuela a question? Because I think I can, I think I can line up with you here, but I just have one question. Your motion, can you first of all tell me the part you added? Because I just missed it when you were saying it at the end.
I was basically asking the City Manager to wait to adopt the finding, our motion tonight, until after the June 1st meeting, so that the Commission could bring forward potential recommendations for our consideration before we start moving the train down, actually implementing the change.
Okay. And then the other part, you were moving forward the mayor's memo, but the mayor's memo that is in the staff recommendation, I mean, in the packet today?
Yeah, as, as was submitted for supplemental. Yeah, as was in print.
Okay, the one in print. Okay, okay. And I can, here's where, thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. So first of all, I just want to say I did have the opportunity to be one of the mayor's Brown Act's on this item, and that was a real privilege, because I got to see a little bit of a different side of him. I think we, we all know, I mean, Stephon Clark's death was such a tragedy. It was so hard for the city and so hard to be on the council and horrible for the communities. And, you know, I, I think we all know that, that 392 and 230 are really important state laws. And if you know me well, you know, they're really important. It's hard for me to memorize those numbers, and I have them now. But the, any numbers, any numbers are hard for me, but 392 and 230 have, they've changed the whole thing for the state. And what we're seeing here in our mayor is really his skill set from the Senate. He's taking 392 and 230, and he's putting them together into a resolution that allows us to direct the City Manager to actually use them. So a lot of cities haven't done this yet, because it's challenging. 392 and 230 don't necessarily line up with each other. So this work that the mayor has done over the weekend to line them up and really allow us to move forward with what the Commission has suggested, what the Commission sent forward, saying, hey, we want the police department to have a last resort for deadly force resolution, is what we're trying to do. I think that's good. I think that's right. I think most people, I think our constituents would agree with that, that we have a great police department, at least I believe we do. I believe we have a really great police department with really wonderful men and women in there who try their very best every day. And I'm particularly proud of our chief. I think we have a phenomenal chief. I think we have the best chief in the country. And I think he's trying very hard. I also think we have a really smart community, and they're watching what's happening, not just here, around the world. And I don't think this is personal, too. For some people it is, but I don't think this is personally a dig on the police department. I think it is a standard that we just want everyone to, to really embrace, right? To try our very best to put this in place and keep people safe, everybody safe, as many people safe as we can. The first thing that the mayor said tonight was that we have the same goal, and that is to keep people safe. And that is true. I know that's true of every one of my colleagues. I know that's true of the commissioners. I, my police commissioner is Basam Alkara, and I know he works really hard, and he's a fantastic community. And I know that Mario is a great, there are great people on that committee, and they're all just trying to give us something to move forward. And we might have to come back to it later. There might be other amendments. I don't think anybody's going to be really happy tonight, other than we can see progress. I don't think anybody's going to get a pure victory here out of what they want. But I do think that's how progress happens. You want to talk about being progressive. It's about taking some steps when you can, and I think this is a moment where we can take some steps. Councilmember Valenzuela's motion, as she has stated it here tonight, I can support. And I'm going, going to do that, Councilmember Valenzuela. If it stays as it is right now, as you have made the motion, using the memo that the mayor put together, worked so hard on and did such a great job with, I think it's something that in the end, we can all be proud of. And Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Vang, and Councilmember Harris are all probably right that some versions of this and some pieces of this will come back at some point. But that's okay. Future councils, this council can look at it again. And we can continue to try to get better in whatever way, you know, we need to. That's the job. That's the role. But I do think this is the right moment to have some progress on this issue. So, Mayor?
Thank you.
I'm going to support Councilmember Valenzuela.
I do appreciate that very, very much. I want to speak to the substitute motions for a moment, then, of course, colleagues can respond. First of all, the Councilmember Harris's substitute motion asking that this go back to the Commission. This is exactly what we've been doing for the last two years, to the great frustration, frankly, of the Commission and the community. I mean, we can debate and argue about the terms, and certainly we heard some advocates tonight want one thing instead of another, but the biggest frustration is the fact that we don't make a decision. And so I don't agree we should send this back to the Commission. This is, nothing is perfect here. They've made a set of recommendations. They put forward a very, a very important concept, and yes, some language. And I think we need to take it up, and that's exactly what we're doing tonight. And it has been a thoughtful conversation. And it's not the first time we've had this conversation. We've been having it for a couple of years, and the City Council has still not weighed in on the use of force as applied to deadly force in a real way, like we're being asked to do tonight. So I disagree and will vote against that substitute motion. Councilmember Vang's substitute motion, well-intended, I understand. That's the, the dividing line here in terms of, well, the exact Commission language or my memo, what I put forward, my original memo. And first of all, I am trying to achieve consensus here, because I think it is that the City Council and the city is much stronger when it is possible, when we speak with one strong voice. I respect dissent, and there's nothing wrong with a 7-2 vote or a 5-4 vote. But I believe that we ought to make the effort to try and do the right thing and bring everybody together. But there's another reason why I disagree with Councilmember Vang's well-intentioned motion. And that is, and I'm not, you know, trying to pat myself on the back in terms of authorship here, but frankly, the Commission language does not use the word "shall." It's not in there. Doesn't use the word "shall." It talks about deadly, excuse me, last resort, talks about deadly force, but it does not, it does not use "shall." What I've written here takes that 230 bill, which was a compromise in the legislature and asks officers to consider. Well, I changed that in my memo to "shall." That's a strengthening of the policy. And Councilmember Valenzuela, who I know, you know, is very consistent and also very responsive to her entire community, but especially the people who are pushing for social change, is the maker of the original motion. And that's important. The original motion is the right thing for us to do tonight, members. It is the right thing. If we ping pong this back to the Commission, we're going to have five or six more of these kinds of discussions without resolution, to the great frustration of everyone. And if we take the exact Commission language, I think we're going to be missing an opportunity to do something even stronger and without bringing everybody, not everybody, but as many members and as many stakeholders in the community along with us. So I'm ready to vote. I'm ready to, of course, hear from members. Let's see what we have here. We've got councilmembers Harris and Vang want to speak again. And then I think we should vote on each of the substitute motions. And, and if they're defeated, which I hope they will be respectfully, then we vote on the main motion. So, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the chance to speak again. I would like to point out that Dr. Kofor was previous Chair of the Commission. You know, I, for that reason, I take her recommendation very strongly. I still firmly believe that the semantics involved here are critical to the outcomes and that the wrong wordsmithing could lead to a dangerous situation for either an officer or a community member, that this deserves more scrutiny. That's the way I feel. I agree with you that dragging this out is somewhat painful, but this is a very critical issue. And I'm willing to go through those discussions, and I would actually value the input of the Commission on your proposed change language.
Can I ask you, this is Councilmember Harris, because I want to go back and forth a little with you here. Do you think there is any circumstances under which you would be comfortable voting for last resort, since it is not mentioned in either 392 or 230 specifically?
So, Mayor, my answer to that is yes. I could find a comfort level, but I have not found it yet.
Okay. By the way, Dr. Kofor was never on the Sacramento Police Review Commission.
She was on the Active Transportation Commission before Measure U.
Yeah, she was on Measure U and the Active Transportation Commission, but not the Police Review Commission. Okay. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a few comments. I know there are multiple motions on the table right now. And if my motion does not pass, I do, I am trying to find common ground with you as well, Mayor. And is it possible you could pull up your, your language? Because I know it's different from what was in the supplemental material, because I think he made some changes. So could you pull that up again? I just wanted the council to see that again.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't do the technology here, but.
Okay. And then if you can zoom in into the, the language, just so that we can see it, because I know it's different from what was in. It was.
The only difference is the red before deadly force is used. And Councilmember Valenzuela's motion was to move my original memo without that language in there.
Without the, without what's in the red?
Without the red, before, before deadly force is used. Gone back and forth on this in the last hour, kind of quietly, and I sort of see it from both sides. On the one hand, putting it in here limits the standard that the law enforcement is worried about to deadly force. On the other hand, the advocates who wanted this, Chair Guerra, who I have the greatest regard and respect for with the way he has worked this whole thing, by the way, I'm just going to say that for the record, wants this language. And my, my argument back is, why do you need it in there? You want the last resort to apply to both deadly force and non-deadly force. That's a better way to do it. So I'm, I'm completely flummoxed on this, on this thing. And so Councilmember Valenzuela's motion, though, did not include the red there. My original memo did not have the red. This was changed. This was changed by me and put up on the, on the screen as a, as a last-minute change. But now Councilmember Valenzuela's motion is to take that out, or it doesn't take it out. She's just saying, do the original, the original memo. Or it doesn't take it out. She's just saying, you, do the original, the original memo.
Okay. Yeah, I actually um, do believe the red mix is stronger, and I was going to add one more item if we were going to go with this. Um, I'm just trying to find a compromise as well, Mayor, uh, because I want the language to be a little stronger. I think the only thing I would add, but I, I'm hearing from you that you don't want to wordsmith, but I just do want to share that, you know, I would, you know, move forward and, and compromise if we added the word um, right, so after, before, so before deadly forces used, comma, piece, officer shall, and I would just in- insert two words, exhaust all tactics and techniques. That's the only thing I would add if we were to go with your um, with your proposal. If you don't use those words, then I would, I would not support the.
Okay.
What's on.
I, I.
So I just wanted to share that with you, so.
Fair enough. No, I can live with the imperfections of my work here. Uh, but I don't think that I'm going to words, uh, take any changes that wordsmith it. I want to go with the original memo that I drafted over the weekend that was in your supplemental packet. I, I think that is not only good, I think it's great. Um, but I leave it to the judgment of the council, and I made my arguments at the beginning and, and a few minutes ago. Okay, so let, let us take a vote on.
Mayor, it is great. Mayor, it is great, but really quick, you have Councilmember Guerra chimed in.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Co- Councilmember Guerra. Okay, Mindy, do we have anyone else after Councilmember Guerra? Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much. Question for Commissioner Guerrero here. I, I guess I, uh, my question is, with the red language, um, is the, is the language, language stronger or without it stronger? What, where, where do you, where uh, do you see that language and how it impacts the motion?
Uh, um, you know, to, to answer that, I just want to add a brief context. So the language was uh, made available, you know, a couple of days ago, and I got an avalanche of calls, um, which is probably what you all get every day. So I understand what you go through a little bit. Um, and I heard uh, concerns with uh, uh, the proposed language. I heard uh, folks, some folks saying, you know, this is good language. And um, there were two issues that I thought had some merit. Um, one of them was that this language um, bef- without the red part um, does, do- doesn't do justice or doesn't, doesn't differentiate. Justice is not the right word. Doesn't differentiate between um, uh, other types of force. So for example, the uh, SACPD General Order 580.02 defines um, uh, less than lethal force. You can, i- it might not be exactly like that, but that's what it is, less than lethal force. And so to differentiate, um, it's important to add before deadly force is used because this is last resort related to um, deadly force, and of course, it has to come before. It can't, you know, come after the fact. So that's what I think that language does to clarify, and that's why I think it's important.
So Councilmember Guerra, um, so I don't want to debate, again, my friend Chair Guerrero, I think he's done a great job, but where we, where he and I maybe disagreed a little bit is that the sentence before that se- is the declaratory sentence. It says deadly force shall only be used as a last resort. This whole section is about, the whole memo is about deadly force. So it distinguishes. Um, a- and so again, I feel like on all sides, I'm kind of getting caught on the uh, you know, dance, dancing on the old head of a pin here. But i- I say it, deadly force shall only be used as a last resort, period.
Let me, let me be, well, let me be clear here about kind of where I think, one, I agree that I do not think we should postpone this. Feel like we've had a number of hearings on this. We've, we've discussed the issue at length, so we should take an action. Um, but where I find this a, a little, maybe, you know, Mr. Mayor, y- you could talk about this and uh, or Councilmember Vang, but when, when you don't use the red language, then I, then I almost, I, I'm inclined to also almost uh, support the, the, the uh, police commission's recommendation. Uh, and, and not for the, and, and for this context as well. I mean, I wanted to send a statement, but um, but uh, but then the, the, the bigger question that comes about is that both the city attorney, even OPSA said that it's a, that, that it could create some ambiguity and it'll be challenged. Well, frankly, I think, which, which either way we go, um, we might get challenged anyway. So I, I'm, you know, in one sense, I want to find the best language that's most effective, but in the other, it's also, uh, it's also a, a statement. So, you know, Mr. Mayor, maybe if you could help I, uh, move us, help move the, address that question because I know you're saying, we don't want to wordsmith it, but, but I think it does make a change now um, uh, by not taking that, that red language. Or maybe Councilmember Valenzuela, if you want to speak to that point.
If that's okay, Mayor, could I briefly?
Yes.
So I mean, I believe that the use of "shall" in this memo is stronger. However, part of this motion by giving the commission a chance in the next month to bring back if they think further changes are needed is because, yeah, there are additions that have been suggested. One of them was inserting the word exhaust all before tactics and techniques. And I think that's something that we can consider because we just heard from the city manager, we're going to have another action item on this in just the next couple of weeks. And so I, I agree with the mayor that I think wordsmithing from the dais right now, especially because part of the crux of this is that we want the commissioners to get a chance to give input. And I respect what Chair Guerrero is doing in his role on the commission, but I also respect that he is not the commission. And he said several times on this call that he cannot speak for the whole commission. And so what I think would make sense is moving forward the memo, giving the commission a chance, right? They have a meeting on Monday. Plenty of time to amend the agenda, to put this item on there, and then if they have additional recommendations, we could bring that back for further action, but I do want to act today. And so that's the um, acting today, but keeping that door slightly open so Howard doesn't start implementing for a couple more weeks until we get a chance to make sure that we've fully considered all of the commission's ideas and recommendations.
I, I.
We'll get another bite at the apple, I guess.
You know, thank you, thank you, Councilmember. And to that point, I do want to thank Commissioner Guerrero and the other commissioners. We spent a lot of time, um, you know, in uh, briefing and, and getting, getting to understand this issue better. And, and that helps a slight advantage. So what I will, what I, I, in my feeling is also, I think uh, uh, we should not, we should not postpone this. We should uh, respectfully, Councilmember Vang, I won't support the, that motion. Uh, but I will support Councilmember Valenzuela.
Good. Okay, thank you. Um, I think that's um, that's good. I think we are ready to vote now. So let us vote first on Councilmember Harris's substitute motion to take this back to the commission without taking action, which again, Mayor, I oppose it, but let's call the roll on the, on the item.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Claire, this is Councilmember Harris's motion.
Yes.
No.
Councilmember Laloe?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
No.
Councilmember uh, Guerra?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
Count, Mayor Steinberg?
No. Okay, that substitute motion is defeated. The second substitute motion is by Councilmember Vang to take the commission language as is. Again, for all the reasons argued or articulated, I think this is, it's good faith, but I oppose this. Um, I oppose this. So let's call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Laloe?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
No.
Councilmember Guerra?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
No. That substitute motion is defeated. Now the main motion, Councilmember Valenzuela's motion on the original memo, the mayor's memo that was uh, printed yesterday, let's call the roll.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a quick, we're voting on taking this, your, the memo that um, you spoke of with the red.
Without the re- without the red, without the red. Without the red.
We're voting on the original of what was in our package.
The orig- the original memo, and as Councilmember Valenzuela said, um, Chair Guerrero, other members of the commission may be coming forward with some additional recommendations, which could include that, could include the now-famous red language or, or, or other things.
Mayor, Mayor, can I help just a little bit?
Sure.
Councilmember Laloe, not, not the original staff report, because the original staff report was the language from the commission. The supplement was the memo from the mayor, and then the mayor put in five words tonight, but we're taking the one that was the supplement without the five words. That's the one we're looking at right now.
Okay, and we're voting on, on the supplement, going back to the commission, and then coming back again for another.
No, it doesn't go back to the commission. It just gets voted on tonight, but then Councilmember Valenzuela added a component where it doesn't get implemented until after the commission has a chance to look at it, and then if they want to weigh back in, we would have time to re-agendize it, but it will automatically just go to Howard unless something happens in between and it needs to come back.
We are setting, we are.
Her request was for a little extra time.
We are setting the policy tonight, and the policy can always be amended at a subsequent time, but we are setting the policy tonight. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Thank you. That motion passes eight to one. Thank you very, very much, everybody, for a very important decision tonight. Uh, again, not the final word, but um, a, a, a very good, positive direction that came as close to creating consensus as I think we could. So thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, you deserve a ton of credit for that work. You, you did a really good job, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. To all of you for, to you, to Katie Valenzuela, worked very hard on it as well, um, and to everybody for diving in. Thank you. Um, all right, that's the council agenda. Um, are there, are there council ideas and questions?
Yes, Mayor, I have one.
Yes, please.
So uh, I have an ask of our city manager. Um, there's been a groundswell of support in the community led by Josh Ponet, his brother Joe Payne, and his cousin Ron Payne to rename the H Street Bridge after Taro Sullivan, a fallen officer. I'm definitely in support. I've been working with staff, so I'd like the city manager to bring back a report for consideration by the council.
Will do.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Any, any other members, uh?
Councilmember Jennings?
Councilmember Jennings.
Well, actually, I have a um, a, close the meeting in honor of.
Oh, yes.
I'd like everybody else to go first.
Yes, of course, Councilmember Jennings. Is there anybody else? Do we have uh, members of the public, um?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Laloe. Councilmember Laloe just raised his hand, and I have three members of the public.
Okay, let's do, uh, Councilmember Laloe, then we'll do the three members of the public, and then we'll um, adjourn.
Um, thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Um, I think that we, we, we continuously need to talk about this topic, and that's the hate crime that continues uh, going through our city. It's, it's, it's something that I think within our, the body of this group, um, almost every week, we should bring it up and remind people that, you know, hate is just ignorant. And the more we care and love thou neighbor, the better of a city we're going to have. And this idea of hate against a particular group, um, i- it's just, I can't get my head wrapped around it, but I think somehow, uh, from the city or from the dais, we just soon need to remind our constituents that with hate, we can't accomplish anything. Uh, when you watch the news, that's all you hear these days. Hate, hate, hate. And sometimes it's better to just turn off the TV and just walk away and recognize who you are. Help your neighbors regardless of the color of skin, where they're from, their ethnicity, their sexual orientation. Uh, that's what we need to uh, preach and, and force versus these stories that we continuously um, hear. And uh, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, um, very much. Let, let's hear from the three members of the public, then I may have something real quick. Then we'll ask Councilmember Jennings to end the meeting.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, this is uh, Lambert of uh, my family's cheesecake business. I have some very uh, forceful statements to make tonight. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Steinberg for sitting in the chamber and paying attention and not leaving. I observed city manager Chan with his head down on the phone. He left the chamber more than once, unless he has a kidney problem. He should be forced to sit in there as well.
He's been here the whole time.
No, he hasn't. I've been watching it. He left twice. He left twice. And I'm not going to argue with you because I know what my eyes saw. The other thing is, this, I want to thank the Sacramento City, uh, Sacramento Bee. They actually uh, confirmed something that I already knew, that the city manager makes more than the mayor salary. I think it's almost one and a half times as much. And I think that's a disgrace. It's also ripe for abuse when you have that type of disparity. And because my family has had so much, so many problems with two submitted forms we submitted in that office, I, I, I am really asking people who are, are behind me to really pay attention to what I'm putting the focus in on. The article from the Sacramento Bee says Sacramento's pandemic small business loans struggle to reach underserved neighborhoods. Thank you, Sacramento Bee, because how do you have problems struggling to cut a check list to a company in Sacramento? It's called stonewalling. And I'm telling you, what I saw tonight was a disgrace. I saw the city manager leave that rostrum twice, and his head was down.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Uh, my family's monitoring you to see if I'm getting two minutes.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, city council and Mayor Steve Ueler.
Caller, we can barely hear you. Can you speak up, please?
Thank you, city council and mayor. This is Steve Ueler, District Six, UHLER. City of Sacramento and Sacramento County have challenges that cities such as San Francisco and, and cities served by PG&E do, don't face when it comes to zero-carbon electricity. These cities already have zero-carbon electricity. Any cost studies done for these cities do not apply to Sacramento because we do not have zero-carbon electricity. We do have the talent in the community to do the science that is required to plan a path to zero-carbon electricity. The studies the city planning department have, have done fall, uh, fall short and are easily challenged pursuant to Public Resource Code 25402 dot one H2. Please see that the raw data and logic for the studies is published so other planners can review and provide the science a single entity cannot provide. The scientific process requires review. It's not science unless it's peer-reviewed. Now to a subject that, that's in the city's jurisdiction to advance climate policy, not subject to Pu- Public Resource Code 25402 dot one H2. Please consider the value of tax policy in advancing climate policy. Changes to uh, utility user taxes can advance climate policy by removing tax exemptions for certain n- natural gas users and adding tax exemptions for users of zero-carbon uh, energy. Please review my submissions for Title III changes I have made in prior public comment and comment tonight. Show the city's commitment to reducing fossil fuel use by adopting the changes. Uh, I see that some of you are becoming familiar with BTUs and uh, how much uh, current and how much electricity. electricity will take to replace that. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mindy. First off, hello, and thank you all for the time. I appreciate the platform to speak. Now I will directly address the council as a whole. First, I am a combat medic of Operation Resolute Enduring Freedom. I, I wrote that wrong, sorry. I served in North Temple Compound, Afghanistan. Most people would say I fought for our right to have these meetings. But here we go. Why is SacPD, Howard Chanderell, and the city council quote unquote beefing up the police while suicides for police are at a record high? Police suicides are actually at record high in America worldwide. So like in all the world, like the countries, America, the police are killing themselves. So, quick backstory, I was also a combat medic for an infantry unit. I believe suicide is one of the most preventable causes of death. I have dealt with suicidal ideation since the third grade myself. However, suicide remains one of the most preventable causes of death and yet still destroys the United States Army from the inside out. I have a question. Are police expendable to the public, or is the thin blue line what separates our ego from our violence? As a chronic low wage worker and an essential medical worker and an immunocompromised survivor of the first year of the most current pandemic, mental health is always at the forefront of any prospective job, especially jobs involving blood and human bodies. Eep, boop, bop. Field medicine has really failed to understand how to be remotely good, quote unquote, good, at preventing self-harm. Like seriously, look at the statistics. From my perspective, combat is not a joke. Many police officers are former soldiers. You must question why all of these kids want to start, start a shotgun. I always wondered why anyways. The government working class of Sacramento has a white investigation, or a white supremacy investigation on our hands, checking into all those that attended into the January sixth Capitol failed insurrection of what I considered a white rage riot. The local cops, the DEA, and a few members of the FBI, and a bunch of Proud Boys and white supremacists, and supporters of Trumpism, not just the president, but Trumpism as a whole, can enjoy their court...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I have a few questions left, though.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Let's end the meeting with an adjourned memory from our colleague Councilmember Rick Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to adjourn in memory of Irene B. West, and I want to speak to her remarkable life. In case you didn't know her, she was a 27-year educator in the Elk Grove Unified School District, being the first African-American teacher in that district and the first African-American principal in that district. Not only was she an educator, but she was the mother of four children, and in 1963, she was honored as Mother of the Year. She could have won that every single year, but she wanted to make sure she spread the joy around. She was so good at what she did as an educator, they named the school after her, the Irene B. West Elementary School. And so that school will continue to educate young people for years on all the values that she stood for. She was a beloved California educator, as I mentioned, a community leader, an activist, a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother, a devoted and active member of the Shiloh Baptist Church here in Sacramento, and a mentor and friend to a multitude of people. And I just want to honor her. The services will be this Friday, and I want to honor her at this council meeting by closing out the council meeting in her honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. In honor of Irene West, as she rests in peace, this city council meeting of May 4th, 2021, is adjourned.